Call the regular meeting of Pennington County Commission order. Just remind you agendas are in the back of the room. Speaker request forms are in the back of the room. Please silence your cell phones. That includes the sheriff. He tried to abuse it before the meeting. And I would ask Commissioner Laster to lead us in a moment. Silent reflection and the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Laster. Item four, review and approve the agenda, and I have a motion coming from Commissioner LaCroy.
It was chair, I'd moved to approve the agenda with the change to move unassigned funds to discuss about before the budget 16, item number 16, and also pull item 18B from the highway department.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a second for the discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Executive proclamation, I would defer to Commissioner LaCroy on this also.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is for National Custodian Appreciation Day. We want to show our, at least express our appreciation for all you do, especially in these times. Whereas the custodians are our first, first line of defense in the war adjourns and often is the thank, thankless task custodian work behind the scenes and sometimes while we sleep. Sometimes we walk around them in the halls, not always seeing them on their work as is important end. Whereas Custodian Appreciation Day is celebrated every second October each year. It is recognized the hard work that it takes to keep the buildings in tip top shape as well as recognizing the people who diligently work to make sure we have workplace that is spotless and sanitary. And whereas custodians contribute to the critical first impressions of the success of any business, our organization by delivering outstanding service and running well maintained buildings. Whereas their skills save businesses and organizations money. Well maintained carpets and services last longer, seasonal updates and maintenance help buildings to run more efficiently too. Custodial workers make sure buildings are ready for each season and running correctly. As a result, the buildings are safer and safer and healthier for those entering them. And whereas the Pennington County buildings continually looked organized and presentable because of custodians efficiently keep everything in tip top condition. Now therefore, we, the Pennington County Board of Commission of Pennington County, South Dakota, do hereby proclaim October 2nd, 2021 as National Custodian Appreciation Day. All citizens are encouraged to give recognition and show appreciation to the men and women who work as custodians in order to keep the workplace running smoothly and in a clean condition. First of all, I want to thank you guys.
Is there a motion to authorize the chair's signature in declaring October 2nd through 2021 as National Custodian Appreciation Day? Go move. Got a motion by Commissioner Roskinak, second by Commissioner Hadcock. Comments?
Chairman?
Commissioner Hadcock.
Being a person that we have a hotel people know, and I do, do cleaning in the rooms and make it's, it's a lot of work. It's, it's a lot of work. So I appreciate our staff that do this type of work. It's hard. It's not something simple. You think you got it, but you have to go back again and again, especially through COVID. COVID is making above and beyond what we have to do to maintain cleanliness in any business, let alone the county. And these are some huge buildings. There's a lot of buildings that we take care of in Pennington County. So huge appreciation to the people that do this work for us. It's, it's a, it's a backbreaking job. It's not simple. That's, that's a lot of work, what people do to maintain these buildings and they keep them in tip top shape like we said. So I'm in, in total appreciation of what you do. I hadn't done that type of work for a little bit and I forgot how hard it is. It's, it's a lot of work. So I thank you for what you do. It's pretty amazing how our buildings look and I thank our director for, for keeping his staff and, and the people doing what they do for us. So thank you all for your service to Pennington County.
For the comments?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I'll second what Ms. Hadcock just said, but I think one of the biggest things I want to mention here is if you happen to see one of your custodial workers out there working, tell me you appreciate them, how much work they do, how much you appreciate them. They are our first line of maintenance to let us know, our maintenance department know if we got lights out, if we got safety hazards, we got problems in our building. They're the first ones to do, to give those reports back and that helps us out considerably. So I just wanted to share that. Did we want to present this to Mike or?
Yes, I will have a motion for it again. I, I too want to just echo what the others have said. You know, during this last year and a half, the custodians have really stepped up. We asked a lot of them and they performed. We appreciate it. We've kept a lot of people healthy and, and our facilities through the custodians and we thank you a lot.
Mr. Chair. I just want to extend my thanks to the custodians of Pennington County. I agree with everything that Lloyd and Deb said. You don't really see it until you're in the, in the restroom and you get your white glove out and can't find any dust, you know you're doing a good job.
Any dust?
All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Lloyd, would you like to present that to Mike?
Chairman, if you please.
Absolutely.
I have with me this morning Steve Lukin, who is our new custodial supervisor for us. Unfortunately, it's kind of a challenge for our custodians who work till 11 o'clock at night to come to, to an early meeting. So I did not require them to come. I hope you can understand that, but Steve did come in. Steve has been, as you're aware, we've been some challenges this year trying to maintain full staff and he's been, had to continue to operate on an evening shift. He's supposed to be moving to days because of the challenges that we have faced. So he's helped keep filling the holes as we move forward. So I'd appreciate if we could give the, the proclamation to Steve for this.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Commissioner LaCroy?
Thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now I have the, the pleasure of presenting some years of service awards to employees. And I'll do it down here. I'll ask each of you to come up, remain here for when we get all done so we can take pictures here also. First one I have for 25 years of service as legal secretary, Melanie Thiessen. Melanie? Second one we have for another 25 years of service is Tom Hettish, fleet supervisor, Next one, also for 25 years of service is Timothy Lindblum, Sergeant, Pennington County Another 25 years of service to Chief Deputy Sheriff Brian Mueller. Next one for another 25 years of service, Jay Alderman from the State's Attorney's Next one for another 25 years of service, Legal Secretary Jack Smith. Think we have one more for 25. Mike Suter, journeyman highway worker. Mike? And then the next one puts all these to shame because they have 35 years. Chris is a accountant out at the Department of Highways.
Thank you.
Can you get them all in there, Holly?
You guys push together with the rest of the workers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is, we just completed the South Dakota County Commissioners and Officials Convention. During that convention, we were presented with a couple of awards for departments and I would ask Commissioner Roskinak to present those.
So the first one is for 2021, it's a loss control safety achievement award and it's going to be presented to the employees of Pennington County Highway on behalf of the South Dakota Public Assurance Line Alliance and SDML Workers Compensation Gold Level. And so, good job, Highway Department, Joe and your employees.
Thank you, Connie. Connie's the backbone of our safety program. She puts together our tailgate meetings every month, makes sure we're doing what we need to be doing to get this award, so.
Thank you, Highway Team.
Second award with 2021 loss control safety achievement award presented to the employees of Pennington County Buildings and Grounds on behalf of the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance and the SDML Workers Compensation Fund, another gold level. And this will go to Mike Cool Building and Grounds.
I have Dave Alkison, our Assistant Director of Buildings and Grounds. He is in charge of our safety operations, so.
Thank you, Dave. Good job, Team Pennington County. Good job, guys and girls.
Thank you much. Item number nine, Holly, I think we have consent agenda coming up.
All right. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda through request of a board member or citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of September 7th, 2021. Approval of the resolution for firefighter appreciation day. Number 11 is approval of the South Dakota Game Fish and Parks General Services contract for snow removal and fall mowing on Whitetail Loop Road for the 2021-2022 season. And finally, number 12 is to recognize and thank volunteers for the month of August 2021.
Are there any members of the public who wish to have any of these items removed from the consent calendar for discussion? Any members of the commission wish to have any of these items removed from the consent calendar? If not, I would take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move for approval.
Take it.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number 13, regular agenda items. Scott, he's coming forward already, Scott Guffey.
Good morning, Scott Guffey, Pennington County Natural Resources Office Director. This is our annual requirement through the 45 day public hearings. We've advertised for 45 days for the expenditure of the Secure Rules School Act Title III Funds. We have for, we have approved in the 2022 provisional budget, $27,631 to be split out between search and rescue and the amount of $18,266 for search and rescue events that take place on the forest. Natural Resources Department and the amount of $4,799 to be used on shaded field breaks along county right of ways on the forest. And then county fire and the amount of $4,567 to be used on fire incidents take place on the forest. So this time, taking public comment or if we've had any written comments, no written comments, so.
Any public wish to address this issue? Seeing none?
I don't think we've ever had any public comments. This, this did expire, so this is the last funding step. They, there is a bill introduced to extend it to 2023. So odds are it will be. If it doesn't, then I'll revert back to the 25% share in revenues coming off the Forest Service. And then if that's the case, I'll just split between roads and schools, so keep you updated on that.
Very good. Thank you, Scott. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I, I just want to take the moment to thank Scott for all his hard work that he does and keeping up on what the National Forest Service is doing and when these breaks. And these are important funds that you go after and spread throughout the community. And I just wanted to make it noted that you're, you do your due diligence and I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Chairman.
Commissioner Hadcock.
Echo what Commissioner LaCroy just said also. Scott, you do amazing job and I work at the same day we have our meetings a lot of times. So my schedule on Wednesdays, but I try to make as many as I can. You do keep me informed, which I appreciate. But I know you're very efficient and do a very good job. Even before I've been on this committee, I've said that because I've went to your meetings and some of your other things that you have done just to be informed. But bottom line is you do amazing job at what you do and your team as well. So I have been on some of your, your things that you do and it's not only so interested in all of it, as you know, but I love that you have that passion for it, Scott. So thank you for everything you do, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Scott. Appreciate you much. Is there a motion to?
Move for approval.
I've got a motion by Commissioner LaCroy, second by Commissioner Roskinak. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item 14, request from Hill City Trails. Pat Weiderhold, Brian Rupert, and Eric Lind, come on up. Just identify yourselves and I understand we also may have some people from DOT on Zoom.
Yes, good morning. My name's Eric Lind. This is Pat Weiderhold and Weiderhold and Brian Rupert with me. We are here representing Hill City Trails, a division of Black Hills Trails. Black Hills Trails has built many trails in the Sturgis and Spearfish areas and has a great reputation working with municipalities, the Forest Service, and other counties. In your packet, you should have a brief introduction to what we're looking for. What we would like to do is to build a, a trail in the right of way between, the highway right of way between Hill City and Sheridan Lake. This would be a phased project. We are pursuing grant money from the state of South Dakota, federal money for trails coming through the state of South Dakota. This project would connect Hill City and Sheridan Lake. It would also connect potentially the Mickelson Trail and Centennial Trails. Ultimately, it's a part of a bigger picture that we would like to achieve, building more trails in and around Hill City for hikers, bikers, equestrians, and runners. This would be a great asset for our community in terms of tourism, health and wellness for local residents, and would have tremendous economic benefits. The trail would be roughly eight feet wide, concrete or asphalt surfacing. And what we're here today to ask of the county commission is that three guys cannot go to the state of South Dakota and apply for a grant as individuals. We need a sponsoring agency in which we would like Pennington County to be that sponsoring agency. We're not asking for money, but we do have to have a government agency be the sponsor ultimately of the projects so that we can pursue the funds through the state of South Dakota and then raise the matching portion of the funds. On Zoom, I can't tell exactly who we got on here, Rich Zucker and Logan Grand from State Department of Transportation. So anything else, guys, you want to add to that?
The, the grant is a transportation alternatives grant. It's a $400,000 grant and there's an 18.05% match, which is 72,200 minimum. And that's what we would be raising through local fundraising and other things. And so that, and you can get more details from Logan and Rich about the project. This is very similar to what Custer has done with a path from Custer to Custer State Park. And so we're modeling a lot of that off of that since it was a successful project. And so we're trying to do something similar there.
Super. Thank you, Brian. Pat, anything? Okay. So I'd call on DOT, is it Mitch that we have on Zoom?
Rich.
Can you hear us, Rich?
I can.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, can now. So is there any comments you'd like to make in regard to this request?
To echo, to echo what they said, the trail that the city of Custer sponsored is in the right of way on 16A. It is maintained by the state of South Dakota Game Fish and Parks. We haven't had any issues. It's been a great trail. Gets a lot of use. One thing that, that people should know is the phased construction and the, the grant money is, is a maximum of $400,000. So when you look at that estimate of costs, it would have to be a phased project. It wouldn't be all in one shot, the federal funding. But we support this and, and we look forward to, to the possibility of a trail going from Hill City to Sheridan Lake.
Super. Thank you. Is anybody else on Zoom for this?
Hi, yep, this is Logan Grand. I manage the transportation alternatives program. I'm here for, I guess, technical support if you guys have any questions about the program in particular.
Okay. Thank you, Logan. Commissioner Hadcock.
So Ms. Logan, so you're totally in support of this and we're moving forward, right?
Yeah, so we had, so we had a site visit, I think it was July or August, and we went out and checked it out and everything looks good. It is a competitive grant process, so that doesn't necessarily mean that they have secured the funding. We have, I think, 20, 30 some other applicants. So it's, it's competitive, so it's not guaranteed that the money will come.
So Ms. Logan, I was just teasing you, but I just think this is, this is going to be pretty amazing, just the activities that it does for people, especially during these times of COVID and issues that we have, that people are getting more and more outdoors. So this is just one more piece to add for people that need that activity and need to get out. So I'm in total support of this and I don't think I can make the motion now, but I think this is going to be something well needed and I think it's great. So hopefully with your help, ma'am, that we can get this done. So we appreciate you.
I'd just add one more item here. I have a letter from Jim Hagan, Secretary of Department of Tourism. It says, "The Department of Tourism applauds Hill City leaders and friends for this forward looking plan to create a better quality of life for Black Hills residents and our visitors around the globe." So there in full support of it also.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskinak.
I think it's pretty great when you just get three individuals. These projects just don't start, you know? And it's not going to be a government agency that's going to make this project work. It's going to be three individuals from Hill City that said, "Let's do it." And now it's starting to happen and I'm really glad to see that it's, I believe it's going to go forwards and I really appreciate the time that you guys put into it. It, it's a very enthusiastic project and I'm really looking forward to being able to ride my bicycle from Sheridan Lake to Hill City someday.
Mr. Chair.
We want pictures of that, too.
Yeah.
Commissioner LaCroy.
First I'll make a motion that I'd like the floor afterwards. I'd move for approval.
I've got a motion from Commissioner LaCroy, second by Commissioner Roskinak. Commissioner LaCroy.
Thank you. First of all, I want to say, you know, the last four years I've been on the Black Hills National Advisory Board and numerous talks about how the trails and the hills are and some that are put in and, and people don't even know about without any thoughts and continuing. The process that you guys are doing is greatly appreciated not only by the Black Hills National, you know, the Forest Board, but also the community, I think, because you guys take deep thoughts and not only the routing of it, but the maintenance of it and the upkeep and you're looking at that. And you guys answered one of my questions that me and Travis were talking about, what about that percentage when we, we go to do this? And you said you're going to raise that and I have faith that you can do that. And I think that route that you guys are proposing, I appreciate that. I think that's going to go along great with, with the new Sheridan Lake road setup, so kudos and thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments? I've got a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. It's our pleasure to, to be a sponsor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 15, Cindy Moller, auditor.
Move approval. I know how you love to talk, Cindy.
Yes, this is for a new hunting preserve alcoholic beverage license. We're looking for approval on that.
Move approval.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second on this. Is there any public comment in regard to this? Seeing none, back to the commission. Any further discussion?
Chairman.
Commissioner Hadcock.
Where's Dakota Honey Hole? It's in New Underwood.
Over, must be over by New Underwood. I, about 159th Avenue over by New Underwood. I don't know exactly where it's at.
Travis, you ever been there?
Yeah, it's back west away from us. I've never been to it, but it's west of New Underwood.
And what is it? I know it has alcohol license, but.
I've never been to it. I, I don't know.
Well, there hasn't been any complaints, so I'm, I'm not against it or anything. I just didn't know what it was.
Oh, it's a hunting preserve is what.
Is that what it is?
The operation is.
Okay.
Sheriff, Kevin, don't be the kind of sheriff that's correct. It's a hunting preserve is what it is.
Kevin, don't be the kind of sheriff that's correct. It's a hunting preserve is what it is.
So they're hunting and they, uh, can drink alcohol?
After they're done hunting.
They're done hunting. Okay, thank you. I'm just teasing, Sheriff.
Got a motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Uh, Cindy, what we've done, you know, on our agenda is we've changed, uh, we've moved fifteen B to behind sixteen, but I fully expect that, uh, sixteen being the unassigned funds at both of these items may be part of the overall discussion together. And so I will go to item sixteen, the consideration of unassigned funds available for one-time expenditures. Just remind the commission, we have committed, uh, some of these dollars. We're, we're, we started out looking at a total of six million dollars. We've committed, uh, the largest share of that already in previous motions. Uh, so I will open up for, uh, discretion relative to the unassigned dollars.
Chairman.
Commissioner Adcock.
If I could ask Cindy some questions, sir. Um, do we still, it's still the 700,000 that's left in there?
Um, according to the worksheet that Holly did, it's 729,930. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and we gave, um, commission, are we taking the 300,000 from the care campus? Can I ask the commission a question on care campus? Are we giving them 300,000 at this time from the one-times?
Well, that needs to be part of the discussion. The 300,000 could either come from here or I expect it could come from the accumulated building fund, so.
Okay, um, I'm not interested in taking it from the cumulative building myself, but, um, if we could have a discussion, Sheriff, um, can you come up for just a second and tell me, um, maybe you know where Alan is here to, to discuss, um, some of that? I know we have a item on there for the care campus, but, um, just a little discussion of how much we're short and, um, how much we might be needing from Pennington County.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, if I may, kind of jumping ahead to the, one of their items, but I guess it ties into this. So, um, that's Mike Cool and Alan Solano to come up, uh, as well, and Barry Tice is here from Health and Human Services. As you know, at the last meeting, uh, we said we were 1.6 short in terms of the bid and the county commission approved 300,000. And since that time, we went to work on finding the balance of the funds. Um, I have a check on my desk from a foundation for 500,000, so I have that in hand. The city council approved 500,000 last night with a contingent on match from the county, which we've talked about and which we've already met or exceeded, in my opinion. And then Alan Solano is here to talk about kind of the balance of the alcohol, 300,000.
So Sheriff Tom, just a question. So the city matched 500? Instead of three, they did 500, they matched what you had raised with the five before? Could you tell me that one more time?
Yeah, the city gave 500,000 towards the project.
Okay.
So Commissioner, just for clarification, not only have we given the 300,000, but we provided the, the land for it to be built on. Uh, we've also had some other expenses, I believe, and, uh, design and so forth. So, uh, we have, we have exceeded what the city is requesting for a match, in my opinion, too.
And we also, we still need, if I'm correct, Commissioner LaCroy, we still need, and Sheriff, we still need furniture and some other things in there. Did we budget for that?
At this point, we don't have money allocated for FFNE. We thought over the next year, we would try and solve that. Um, and Michael.
And why I brought this forward is because I think this is pretty important. I think it's something that, um, again, for one-time funds, that we could help out with some of this because, um, I'm just saying, mental illness is something that's huge. I think when they start doing this crisis stabilization unit, they're going to find that it's going to help with the, the law enforcement, it's going to help with the Health and Human Services. This is huge for Pennington County. I know some people think it's just state. But, um, Rapid City in western South Dakota, this is huge. This is a huge project. And there's a lot of needs and a lot of study that they're going to find, I believe, through the stabilization unit, that we can help, um, like we were talking about diversion and some other things, Sheriff, that it's going to be huge. And to me, it's one of the most important things that we are doing right now in Pennington County to move forward. I know we gave 500 and we gave this and that, but this is, uh, one-time COVID money. And I'll keep saying it, the mental illness and, and the things that have, um, attributed to COVID, from COVID, I should say, is huge. And for me, um, if they, to make their funding and for them to keep looking and having to go out and tell people they have to give when, um, we have some one-time money to make it a lot, not simpler, because it's never simple, but to give them some more help, I'm, I'm okay with that. That's just my opinion. Um, I'll just keep saying, it's going to be huge, um, seeing in our community and being in the community and watching it even more through some of the jobs I have. Um, and we all been listening to people, been watching the news. Um, just food for thought. Uh, if we can help these guys any way to make this get going and, and move forward even faster, um, I'm willing to do what I need to do as a commissioner personally.
Thank you. Commissioner Ross, connect.
Just doing some, uh, scratching here. So we have 729,930, right, Cindy? So if we do crisis care at 300, that leaves us 429,930. And if we do 150 for the study, hypothetically, if we do 150 for the needs analysis, that'll leave us with 279,930. And hypothetically, if we do 250 for the fairgrounds asphalt, that'll leave us with 29,0930. So I just wanted to put that in perspective. So we kind of, we have to determine what our priorities going to be. And obviously, some of this stuff, like Silver City, the fire department, because they don't have the land, I would suggest that, uh, we just look at that later on and not, not be part of this discussion today.
Further comments? Commissioner LaCroy.
Thanks for your guys' update on, on that. I didn't realize you had another half, 500,000 from a foundation besides, uh, the 500 from the city and the three hundred from us. I, I did not realize that. That makes quite a bit of a difference to where my thoughts are on this. So that, that's fantastic that you guys raised that. And I do have to agree with Gary. I mean, we are putting up the land and some other stuff, and I think that's probably a fair part. But I do, I am concerned about the furniture part of that when it comes to that. Um, the reason why I asked to have the, the, these unassigned funds first moved up front because it now determines how I'm going to vote on the budget. I think we did some outstanding funding on this. I think that we did the four million for, for Pennington County housing for, to help with the housing industry. We did the radio. That's fantastic. With the healthcare trust board, because of the pandemic and finer services are going to get some new places and more economic development. I mean, we're putting in infrastructure for our community to do, do something more. So I think those are outstanding. I think we put the 300,000 that we talked about, uh, into the, the center. And my thoughts are, we don't have to spend this all today. We don't have to allocate it all today. We do those allocations and I think we end up with 429,930 left over that could go into accumulated building funds. If we do the 300 and 150 from, uh, the needs assessment, and it would be in the accumulated building funds, which means it makes it accessible. So later on, somebody, some of these other organizations that want some money, like the fairgrounds with the paving, they come forward and they present, give a presentation and say, "This is why we need it. This is what's going to go on." Then we can make those decisions. I don't think we have to assign it all today. I, I really don't. I think we could put it aside, do a good analyst of what the needs are, who wants it, what for what. So I have a good decision to go to my constituents and say, "Yes, I took a quarter million dollars for this and this is why." You know, uh, those are my thoughts on the whole thing. I mean, I'm not trying to sway anybody. I wanted to get this done so then we could work on, on, on the, the budget. But I, I really honestly feel we do not need to spend it all, assign it all today. We, we've got some good projects. If anything, we assign it to, over to accumulated funds for right now and knowing that we can come back.
Further discussion?
Chairman.
Uh, Commissioner Adcock.
So, Mike, um, Mr. Cool, the needs assessment, um, we don't have it in our budget, but if we keep the cumulative building, um, we are putting money in a cumulative building. We can't use that money, the 150 out of a cumulative building. It seems like it'd make more sense, instead of one-time funds, is to use it through our cumulative building fund. Am I correct or why are we, why are we allocating it for one time?
I, I think that was just viewed as an option to, to fund it, uh, early, uh, to get going with a needs assessment, starting earlier than next year.
Okay, so it's almost October. Are we going to be ready for a needs assessment, assessment done before January?
Uh, well, we could possibly get started be- before the end of the year, but it'll be, it'll be a stretch.
That's what I'm saying. So the 150 doesn't have to come out right now either. It can, Lloyd's right, on some of the, the funding on some of this, it doesn't have to come out right now. We do want that needs assessment, but as I was listening to in Buildings and Grounds, or I'm sorry, um, yeah, our committee for Buildings and Grounds, that we couldn't really get it done this year, the first, by January anyway. So I'm not against it, Mike. Um, I'm just saying, when I visit with you in the Buildings and Grounds Committee, we really couldn't get it done before January anyway. You got a lot on your plate. And that just, um, like I said, we need to move it forward no matter what. It's a huge, huge thing for us, but I don't think it'll be done before January. So just food for thought for the, the 150 as well. So I'm, I'm kind of with Lloyd. I don't think we need to spend it all. I also need to see what we're doing for our next set of, with the budget. So, um, for me, I think the first projects, we, if we're all in agreement with what is on the plate right now, um, that we make that motion and we leave the 429,930 in there and then go to the next step of the, the provisional budget and see where that goes, so.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I would make that motion to approve the 300,000 and 150,000, uh, on, I suppose I should ask a question first. Cindy, accumulated building fund would be a good place to put that?
You want to transfer some money to accumulated building for the, for a total of 450,000? Is that what your motion is?
I thought, I thought my numbers come up to 429,930.
Oh.
Well.
No, that's what's left, but she, he wants to transfer 450. The 300 and the 150 to, am I correct?
Yeah.
That's, that's what you're looking at, is that, that 300 for crisis stabilization unit and the 150 for the needs study?
No, I think we approve those. And then what's left over is, I thought, 429,930.
If, if you approve both of those, what's left over is 279,930.
And that's putting that 150 in accumulated fund for the, uh, building assessment and the 300? Or will we just approve the 300?
Okay, Lloyd, just to clarify. Okay, so you're talking about the 300,000 for the contingency, for the crisis stabilization. You're talking the 150,000, uh, for the needs facility assessment.
Yeah.
Do you want to directly commit those to those projects or?
Well.
What you're, or are you talking about moving it to accumulated building fund and then drawing it out of there?
I guess what I'm, what I'm looking to do is to absolutely move the 300,000, approve the 300,000 to the, uh, crisis care building.
Second.
That would be one motion, I guess.
Okay, so I have a motion to, uh, approve from one-time funding the 300,000 dollars for the contingency for the crisis stabilization center. Is it, and, and I have a second. I have a motion and a second on that.
Okay.
Uh, further discussion? Any public discussion on that? Back to the commission. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Okay. Okay, now, this was where, can I finish?
Okay.
This is where, where I come with the 429. Now.
About 429,000 dollars left.
Okay.
930.
See, this, that's where, where I was going, is that that 429,9?
Thirty.
Thirty get moved into accumulated fund.
Uh, Ross Connect.
Okay, so the 150, you know, that number at our building committees, you know, it's pretty obvious that we think we're going to be outgrowing this facility and we need to know where we're going to be in five to 10 years. So we felt that needs assessment was, uh, pretty paramount to get that done. But Deb's got a good point. Even if we tried to hire these folks tomorrow, it'd probably be a year before we could get anything. So I'm, I'm all for the needs assessment, but, uh, I can also wait to put this on the back burner and if there's something that we think's more important for the dollars, for the dollar.
Yeah. Further, further discussion?
Karen, go ahead. Lloyd, you want to go first?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, my, my thoughts on this is we're, you know, we, we did this through the budget process as far as we're already delaying, uh, uh, the financial software. And we, this is where we're going to need the money. If we can't carry it over, where's the money going to come from next year?
Right, so Chairman.
Just a question.
Lloyd, sorry.
You're referring to the money for the software?
Software and this 150 for the, the needs assessment. I mean, if we put it in there out of this one-time funds, we can still carry it over for next year and have it there so we don't have to look somewhere else for it next year, right?
If you leave this 429,000, or if you move it all over to accumulated building, that would then need to be used for those purposes.
Yeah.
So we wouldn't, we couldn't pull it back out for the, the software, which is, as Gary has mentioned, um, that software might not be ready in '22. Looking into '23, we'll, we'll keep budgeting towards our reserve for software as, as Janet and Shannon and I have done.
Okay.
So.
Commissioner Adcock.
Lloyd, it's not a bad idea, because, I mean, you can't do the software, but a lot of those projects that are left are based on cumulative building, based on asphalt and some other stuff. And I'm okay with the president having the presentations and certain things, uh, first before we commit that to the fairgrounds or to any other project. So, um, I think that's not a bad idea because they can always come and, uh, do their presentation to Buildings and Grounds, just like the re- the rest of the projects, instead of us just approve them, uh, with a, you know, right now. Because there's no plan for them. There's just these ideas that people want to do for their districts or for their, uh, fairground. Um, I'm not against that, like I said, but I think it's not a bad idea but that we put the 429,930 into accumulated building and have them go through the process just like everybody else does that need their projects done. So just, I'm with you if, if, I don't know if I can, I can't make a motion to that now that I talk, but I don't think that's a bad idea.
Further discussion? So, a question, Cindy. So if we just left the 429,000, if we didn't commit it anyplace, not moving to accumulated building fund and so forth, we can still carry those dollars over, correct?
Absolutely.
That's what I was getting. Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I'd make the motion to move that 429,930 over to accumulated funds.
Second.
Over to what?
Accumulated building, sorry.
I've got a motion and a second to move the 429,000 to, uh, accumulated building.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Commissioner Ross, connect.
If I got that straight, then we got zero, correct?
We'd be zero.
Yeah.
We ain't got, we ain't got a second yet.
Want to make sure we got it all.
Yeah, you got a second.
Okay.
So Chairman, why I'm saying that is because, um, like I said, every project we have in Pennington County either went through the highway or it went through, uh, Buildings and Grounds before it came to us to vet that process. Um, kind of like the process to be vetted before we just decide. Um, like I said, I'm not against any of these projects, um, but I think, uh, it needs a little bit more thought on it. So I don't think it's a bad idea to go through a process like the other projects have to.
Further discussion?
One comment, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Sorry.
Uh, thanks for the commission's understanding on this, because I think this process will work out better for us all as a whole, if, to be able to come back separately and then through building committee or through presentations or whatnot. So I think this, that process for today is going to work good for us. I'll support the motion.
Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. Further discussion. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. One-time dollars are, are all committed to someplace at this point in time. So now we go back to fifteen B, uh, the budget.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
From, from my understanding, there's probably about three different options that the commission's looking at. Um, that's why I wanted to kinda deal with, uh, unassigned funds first is because those gotta determine how, where I'm gonna go after listening to everybody's comments. I think everybody knows I'm, I'm in support of the two percent. Where, whether A, B, or C option, I, I'm, I'm still kinda in those different areas. And, and the reason why I support that is number one, the company that I work for, I'm seeing every day, you know, we're across the state, you know, as far as bars, restaurants, uh, C stores, um, businesses that I see going on and I see the employees shortages and I've, we're hearing the effects of, of the wages that are, uh, getting outpaced from what's been the norm. Uh, people are actually, uh, coming in and offering, uh, different employees more money to come work for another place. And it's happening all over the place. It, it really is. That's why, and I've been a part of, uh, political bodies that, that have been really conservative and held back for many years and not taking the challenge to up these rates and wages and then have to pay for it later on. It gets put onto another commission. And so I look at this and the way things are going, I think we need to raise our base. The, I really do. Uh, there's a lot of disagreements whether it should be one percent, one and a half, two. I'm doing my pitch for the two. Um, because I don't wanna have to play catch-up in about two years or even possibly after that. I think, uh, this would get us more prepared for the base salaries. I think we, we got a lot to offer our employees and I think Pennington County's done a fantastic job of trying to keep up. But that's where, I just wanted to let, uh, let the commission know where I'm at on this. Um, I'm not stuck on A, B, C, or D. Which one's the one? Cause I've got one marked, but I'm willing to listen to what's going on today.
So Chairman.
Commissioner Adcock.
Couple of things. Um, well, I'm in, I'm not against the two percent, but I think it's, right now it's not sustainable with this budget. Um, the one percent is, I think is good only because I think with Gallagher, we're gonna have to go through Gallagher and do some changes. So that's a one percent COLA plus trying to figure out with Gallagher in the next few months about what needs to be changed on it because it's not working. We're finding from our, uh, department heads that it's just, um, we're, we're changing everything on Gallagher. So I feel if we give the one percent COLA and then we look at the changes in Gallagher and see what we can do for the employees through that and with our department heads, I think you're gonna find that it's gonna come to pass, that we're gonna do a lot of things with Gallagher that I think'll make a difference for not only this year, but next year's, um, wages. Does that make sense? So we're still making those adjustments, but we're doing it a different way through the study that we actually paid for. So again, um, the one percent would be that first start of what we can do for the employees and then again, um, have John and, um, our department heads and stuff give us some input on Gallagher. Cause I've been talking to, like I said, some of the, well, a lot of the department heads and there's just a lot of issues with it. So, um, and then for the rest of the budget, um, that's why number five, I had some discussion, uh, with Ms. Cindy, uh, me and Travis had met with her, um, with, and I think there's four, the accumulative building budget's two hundred and the fair budget is two hundred to decrease the levy. I think the accumulative building, um, we could take, probably take the two hundred and fifty thousand from and then a hundred and fifty from the fairgrounds because I think what's gonna happen, at least for me personally, I think they do need the asphalt done. I think it could go through the process of accumulative building. Um, there is that four hundred thousand that we just put in there and, um, have them fill out the paperwork, go through the process and make it more like everybody else when they're doing projects. And that would end up bringing that total, if you think about it, if you only took one fifty, you would still have three hundred and fifty in the, in the, um, fairgrounds, which it was one eighty. Plus, if they ended up doing the asphalt later, if we all agreed that that was well needed and it was something through, um, the fairgrounds that was needed, that bring them up to getting six hundred thousand this year. And we can always bring that levy up, um, next year. Um, instead of moving them up from one eighty to five hundred, it'll give them up to three fifty. So I think it's being pretty fair. It would balance the budget. We could take care of the wage study, uh, through Gallagher. We still give the, the employees that one percent COLA, um, and make this ba- budget so, um, it's balanced, the cash flow is balanced and it is sustainable. So, um, I don't know if you ran those numbers at all, Cindy. I think they're the same except we just changed where the four hundred, wouldn't be two hundred and two hundred if I'm correct. Sorry to put you on the spot, Ms. Cindy.
Nope. That's just fine. Um, with the option five C, that would reduce the accumulated building reserve budgeted amount by two hundred thousand, or two hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
And then the, um, accumulated for the fair budget by a hundred and fifty thousand, yes.
Yes, and that would make it sustainable. We could still give the COLA. It would make our cash balance good. It would make our, it would be sustainable for next year, uh, meaning to keep continuing this because I think when we're, we're guessing on the, a little bit on the COLA and where that should be, um, at one percent, I think it's a good safe spot to be. And then like I said, if we could, I, I keep saying, we're gonna have to look at the Gallagher. Your, your department heads are saying it. Um, I truly think it needs to be looked at and where we can do that wage adjustment. I don't know if it's through steps or what it is. I am not a, um, wage study person, but I think it needs to be adjusted for next year and then how we do that, uh, with the staff in order to make those adjustments, I think can be done. It doesn't have to be done right away, but it needs to be, the process needs to be started. So, um, those are, that's my pitch for the budget.
Commissioner Ross can act.
Well, I'm gonna take a middle-of-the-road approach. I'm gonna go for the one and a half, option seven. If we reduce the accumulated building by six hundred thousand, that would be six hundred and fifty that would be left to a fund that's gonna probably be around two million at the end of the year. So at the end of the year, we'd hypothetically have two million, six hundred and fifty thousand in accumulated building. And then I think we just put some money in accumulated building. So I think the, that's why I'm kinda leaning towards option seven, which would be, uh, more than one percent, but less than two.
Chairman.
Uh, I'm gonna ask Commissioner Lester if he wants to speak before.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Adcock speaks the second time.
Thank you, Chairman. I was contemplating what I was gonna say after all that transpired in there, 'cause I was trying to get, make sure one of the formulas was right and I think it was a formatting error. So I was kinda, uh, heard part of that. And I agree, we've gotta look at this long-term. I mean, if we, here's my concern. If we do the two percent wage adjustment, and is John here? Just out of curiosity, or?
Not.
He's not?
He's here.
Oh, he's here. Um, my concerns is long-term on this, and John, maybe if you can answer this question. When was the last time that we did any, um, increase?
Mike, John.
Any increase in, um, benefits? In other words, co- uh, co-pays, um, for, for any of those benefits? Uh, when was the last time we did anything, raising any of those for the, for the employees? And I ask that question simply because I think it's been at least five years. And if we're going, and we've been raising, uh, their pay for the last five years, there's a point where when we ask for money to go from the county commission to backfill a fund that was short, we have to look at that. So if we're gonna give a pay raise, there has to, I think that there has to be a look into what the employee is going to commit, uh, as well to that. And so that's why my, whenever I talk about my view of not supporting a two percent or even a one and a half percent right now, it's because I think, uh, with Commissioner, um, Adcock's statement, that our visit with Cindy, I think we really need to look at that, uh, pay scale to see what's right and actually work to get the right numbers instead of saying, well, let's shoot by the hip, let's do this right now because we think it feels good, but then it puts us in a pickle a little bit later on. And I don't want that to happen for the county. I wanna make sure that we're doing the right increase in pace, in salary pays, but also the right increase in, uh, the employees' commitments to what they do for their benefits as well.
Chair, may I speak? Okay. John Marl, Pennington County Human Resources.
So, great question, Commissioner Lester, about the healthcare trust and, uh, the premium changes. Um, as I understand, the year before I got here, there was actually a decrease in premiums. Uh, and then the time that I've been here now, so this is my fourth year, uh, we've not had an increase, uh, in those at all. Um, for this year, we went on the new scale, so there was an increase, on average of about one point seven percent for employees, plus we adjusted the scale by one percent for this year. So we've done that. The two years prior to that, the increases overall were almost five percent, um, each of those two years, uh, for employees as far as wage increases. Uh, I wasn't here prior to that, so I don't have, uh, firsthand knowledge of, of what happened then, but, um, I know that they've been fairly substantial. Um, and at this point, I, I would heartily support, um, a change in, in premium rates for employees because I think it's necessary and I think it's been recommended by our healthcare, um, administrator, if you will. So Walmart takes care of the, the billing and things for us and, and they've recommended this year, I think it was an eight or nine percent increase for next year. Um, but we as a group, again, have voted to not, um, make any adjustments. So, um, anyway, that's my two cents on that.
Mr. Chairman, follow-up.
Commissioner Lester.
Thanks, John. Thanks, John, for that information. See, now knowing that, I think it should give us an idea that next year, we should be really thinking about that when we're talking about our budget for next year and understanding how we're gonna do our pay, uh, our considerations for pay increases next year and discussing the whole Gallagher issue and trying to get it online. So appreciate that, John.
I would just like to add in with that, that we didn't do a premium increase for the people that are on the health insurance, but we did raise the co-pay on the medication. So it's more of a users, users-based fee. So, once we have an idea of where that's going to go, it will help us look at what we do need to do in the future for premium increases, if anything. Or, John, you've always said that the, how do you got to? Prescription is a large part of what our claims are. So hopefully that's going to help offset that so that we won't have to go that much higher with premiums in the future.
Thank you. So, Mr. Chair, my final on that is that's why I'm more inclined for the one percent so that we can kinda give a little bit back to the, uh, employees this year and then so that we can work really hard and diligently. I would hope to figure out what's the most appropriate for next year to get us on track and appropriate and what would be sustainable for our budget long-term.
Okay, Mr. Chair. Uh, one second. Before I let anybody else speak again, I'd like to at least voice my opinion on this. Uh, I too am, uh, supporting option seven, uh, which would be the one and a half percent, uh, wage adjustment. Um, I'm also proposing, uh, that we would, uh, cut back the accumulated building reserve from the one point two-five million, which was, uh, originally proposed by six hundred thousand, but still add six hundred and fifty thousand to that accumulated building fund. And I think as you go through, uh, through it, uh, the changes would leave us with an overspending revenue by a little over one and a half million. Uh, but then as we have an anticipated three percent underspent budget of two point four million. So our reserve would still be estimated at nineteen point nine seven, pretty close to that twenty percent. Commissioner Adcock first.
So, um, okay, so I'm kinda piecing this together because if we put four point two nine, nine thirty into cumulative building, right? That brings us up to what, Cindy, with the two point five zero? I'm not gonna add it myself, 'cause I'll probably screw it up. Cause we put the four, remember the four twenty-nine, nine thirty went into accumulative building by the motion. So it brought that one point two-five up to what?
Uh, well, that'd be like one point six.
Yeah, so one point six. So we're gonna take six hundred from accumulative building, right? And then you guys wanna leave the levy on the, um, fairgrounds the same, which is fair. I don't know if I would come back later and, and vote for the two fifty for the asphalt for the fairgrounds, only because, um, we just took six hundred thousand off of accumulative building, which I think is pretty important because otherwise you're giving the fairgrounds a total of seven fifty this year when Mike's budget for all the buildings, to do their buildings, remember, is eight hundred thousand. That accumulative building fund is for like sheriff's projects, Janus projects, certain projects, and you've left, um, uh, two million. So, um, do you see where I'm going with, um, so number one, if you wanna take the six hundred, that's fine to make that million. If you wanna leave the one percent because we need a Gallagher study and we need some other adjustments, I think that makes sense. So it's kinda putting some of the suggestions together and still accomplishing the same goal. Lloyd made some good motions with the three hundred. He made some good motions to put it in accumulated building. Now we understand the process that we're having everybody go through. Um, I think everybody's getting a little piece of what they wanted and we're still taking care of the employees through that motion. So it would have to be, or, I'm sorry, it wouldn't have to be. So it'd be one percent for the employees with the consideration, the looking of Gallagher. It would be six hundred instead of four hundred, right, off of the top. So that's a little bit different. So then that would put two hundred, or that would take two hundred more off. You see what I'm saying, Cindy? What, tell me that, what that would do if that was a one percent increase for the employees. Um, we did what Ron said, the six hundred thousand off accumulative building since we just added one point six. It would leave that with a million. How does our budget look?
Of course, you'd have to pick the option that I don't have done before, thank you.
Well, I figured we probably wouldn't all agree on everything we wanted, but we could come to a consensus where people were, I mean, it made sense what Lloyd did. It made sense what, what Travis said, what Ron said, because of what Lloyd's motion did. So that's why it kinda changed it a bit. And then Travis with your one percent and saying the same thing, that's why we had that discussion with Cindy, is because I, I truly believe we'll take care of the, um, employees through that one percent adjustment, COLA adjustment, and then come back and look at the Gallagher on the steps because they're not working. So, that's my opinion.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Do you have a response?
Well, I was actually just gonna say if we do the one percent and you reduce accumulated building by six hundred thousand, we're gonna be over twenty percent reserve, which is, I mean, that's, that's fine, but I don't have that exact number because that's, like I said, not one of the options that I.
So what if you put the other half percent at one and a half percent for employees?
If we do, if we do the one and a half percent and reduce the accumulated building reserve by six hundred thousand.
Right.
Not budget that for them this year. We're at nineteen point nine seven percent. So we're just right there with twenty percent, which was the goal for, um, the unassigned fund balance in the general fund.
And that would be a good compromise between the two. The one balancing the budget, Lloyd's motion, and still doing the six hundred. I'm for that.
You kinda lost me where, where we're at.
Me too.
Okay, so Lloyd, let me explain.
You're way backwards into it.
Okay, yeah. Cindy, go ahead and explain what I just said.
Option C.
Please, if I may, I believe Commissioner Hadcock's consensus now is with Commissioner Drew's and the one and a half percent settling on the middle as a couple of you have.
Mr. Chair.
Not one percent, not two percent.
So she's, she's suggesting the one point five percent and pretty much what this says, you're taking six hundred from, uh, accumulated building. So that's pretty much I, six, pretty much.
Brings it down.
Or seven, option seven is pretty much what you're saying.
That is option seven.
It is seven.
It is seven.
Lloyd, remember, you made the motion to put four twenty-nine in there. So it's, um, basically one point six, nine three zero or something like that. So then it took it back down to a million with the six. Remember, cause you had made the motion to put four point, four two nine nine three zero in there.
Yeah, I think we just leave all that discussion out of that, out of this and just work with these numbers. I, I know what you're, I know what you're getting at. We upped it, but I think that's why we dealt with that first is to get, get rid of that, 'cause.
Well, to make that so that, it makes it so it's in there, Lloyd. We made that motion. So it, it is included. motion, so it is included in on this. You see what I'm saying? Because we made that motion to put it...
You're essentially going with option seven.
No, no, just, just kind of trying to find a, if you didn't make that motion beforehand, Lloyd, I'll be up straight, I wouldn't have went there because I would have taken it differently. That's why I said it was good that you did that first.
I agree.
Commissioner Roskinak.
I didn't...
It's a catch-22. You know, the 1%, we know that's more sustainable, and we definitely want to make sure that we have the funds for the cover, whatever we decide today. And, but the problem with the 1% is that down the road, we might have a hard time keeping employees and getting new employees, and so there's going to be residual cost to that, too, and we have to be looking at that. That's where I kind of like the one and a half. We're telling our employees, you know, if we could afford it, we'd give you the 2%. But we also got to make sure that we can keep the ship running, so the one and a half is, to me, is a really good compromise.
Mr. Chair.
Each, each half percent is about a quarter million dollars, I believe, in cost.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Okay. Great discussion. That's why I wanted to deal with it for the other part first, because I think I'm still stuck in the two. I really am. And the sustainable, to be sustainable, everything on here, in here is sustainable, it's just a matter of how much we want to take away from one fund to another. So, I mean, the sustainability with the 2% is there, but we're going to be taking money from the fairgrounds, 150,000, we'll be taking 600, which we're going to still do with, even with option seven, from that. So, really, the only difference between those two is whether we take 150,000 from the fair, between option 6C with the 2% wage adjustment and option seven, that's the only difference, is the $150,000.
Lloyd, not to be rude, but the 600 is just the 600, it's no 150 with it. The 600, the fairground stays the same, and cumulative building goes at six, because then the, why would you take from the fairgrounds when you, we're not going to do the asphalt or anything? I guess that was my choice if we're doing both.
We haven't, we haven't made that decision. 150, you've got to remember, this is my thought process, is we up the levy on the fairgrounds to help get them to have a reserve to do capital improvements. They went from 180,000 to almost 500,000, if I remember right, by doing this. So, they're gaining. They're still gaining from 180. If you take 150 away out of that, that amount, they're still going to be up there to 350 to 400,000.
I see what you're saying.
That they're making that, that's, that's why my thought process is on that. It's not like we're taking away something they don't have. I mean...
Sorry, I thought you meant we're just, I didn't know you were adding.
Yeah, quite frankly, I'm willing to, if the commission's ready, we could take option seven and option 6C, whichever one you want to go with first, take a vote on those two to get through this, because I think those are our two that we're, we're looking.
Further discussion. I, I do have a, and I think I'll wait until we have a motion on the table, but I do have a person that would like to speak to us, and I think it's relative to the property tax, which would fit into the budget discussion. Is, is Ms. Big Eagle here? So, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I would make the motion to go with option 6C, which would be a 2% wage adjustment, and utilize stored CPI and reduce accumulated building fund by 600,000 and the fair budget by 150,000.
Okay. Further discussion. Is there a second to the motion? Is there a second to the motion? Hearing none, the motion dies.
Chairman.
Commissioner Haddock.
Let's try this again. So, we'll do the one and a half wage adjustment. We'll do the 600 from accumulative building, and then everything else stays the same.
Yeah, I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Further discussion.
Mr. Chair, that's going to reduce the unassigned fund balance even further, so we're going to be less than the 19.72% if we do the, oh, excuse me, I'm looking at the wrong option.
Okay.
I was going to say, it should be up. You said it was... Said it was higher.
I was still looking at 6C. Sorry about that.
So, I, I tried to wade through all of your stuff, and I set aside a lot of it, just for that reason. Okay. So, I have a motion and a second. Option seven, further discussion.
Mr. Chairman, there's an individual here that we were looking for.
Oh, Ms. Big Eagle? Yeah. Would you like to come forward and understand you'd like to address the commission? Yeah, it probably fits into budget area as well as any place.
Well, in a way, it does, but not really.
Identify yourself.
So, well, first of all, thank you for allowing me to speak today, county commissioners. My name is Valeria Big Eagle. I am a homeowner in Rapid City. So, my concern today is the prospective property tax hike that may come with the excessive property value. We know that the real estate and the homes here in Rapid City, well, they're being sold quite excessively. And, you know, I want to tell my story a little bit. So, about five years ago, I moved here for a great opportunity to work in higher education and to make an impact on students' lives. And when I first moved here with my husband and my three children, we were homeless. We couch-surfed, we lived with relatives, you know. It was really hard to find an affordable place to live here in Rapid City. And we moved from Brooklyn, so it wasn't, you know, I thought it was not going to be that difficult to find a home here, right? And in that time, you know, I guess you can call us the working poor, really trying to have a foundation set so that our kids have a thriving future, have the opportunity to thrive in this community, and start pursuing opportunities such as Black Hills Area Habitat for Humanity. And after four months, finally, we found a place to live and we got in, you know, found that program, and we were in that program for two years, right? And so, I don't know if you know about Black Hills Area Habitat for Humanity, but they provide affordable housing for families. And one of the things is that, you know, you have to be working poor, basically, you know. We do come from poverty, my family. But I, I attribute my, so my name is, well, I am a doctor now, my name is Dr. Big Eagle. I attribute part of that success to having that foundation for my family. And I could not have had that success without affordable housing and without Black Hills Area Habitat for Humanity. And I am not the only one in this community who is concerned about the prospective property tax hike that may happen. I know I've heard stories of homeowners who sold their houses here in Rapid City from Rapid City, and they could not find a home after that and became homeless themselves. It's just, I think it's something that you, you all have the power to do something about it, and then to take care of our community of Rapid City. I know there's several individuals that are moving here, but we need to take care of our own. And so, I just wanted to bring that perspective here today. Like I said, doesn't really pertain to the budget, but certainly pertains to several individuals and homeowners' livelihoods. And I feel like we all have, we all deserve the dignity to thrive in having a stable home. And I know that with an extensive property tax hike, I may not be able to afford my home. And I'm making a good life here for, my husband and I are making a good life here for our children, and they are thriving. And so, I just want to thank you for allowing me to speak today, and I hope you have a good day.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Just Commissioner Roskinak.
You know, I sympathize with you so much of what you're talking about. It's out of our control, because it's driven by the market, and, and also it's driven by state statutes that our county assessor has to follow. But on a positive note, we had $6 million of unassigned fines or funds, and we approved $2 million to go towards affordable housing. So, one-third of that unassigned funds that we had, we appropriated to Pennington County Housing and Redevelopment, and we're currently in the process of design for a 65-unit facility, which will go in North Rapid, specifically geared for affordable housing. So, we're doing what we can with the limited amount that we have.
True.
But I totally sympathize with you, because I think I read where one of those homes were like 150,000 two or three years ago, and now they're jumping up around 200,000. So, wish I totally had the answer, but just know that we're thinking of you.
No, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Big Eagle.
Just a quick comment relative to the property taxes. Under this budget that we have under consideration right now, I don't think our levy would change. It might...
It would be reduced from what it is this year.
Be reduced, the county portion of it. Keeping in mind, the county portion is a, is a smaller portion, the schools get a much larger portion, city also gets a portion of that. So, the only thing that we have control over is that portion that deals with the county. Yeah, the county is the tax collector, and so we do whatever the schools and the cities indicate that they need from that. But from our portion of it, it's actually going to be the, the levy will be reduced slightly this year.
Oh, thank you, Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
If you don't mind me clarifying, and if I read this correctly, and Cindy, you can tell me if I'm wrong, as, as I see it, as option seven here, so per $100,000, your taxes would, from the county's side of it, would drop $12.20 per $100,000 evaluation. So, we, we have lowered it based on that. It's the other entities that get the opportunity and have the statute or state authority to tax that you also need to speak with as well. But thank you for that story.
I will, thank you.
So, Chairman.
Thank you.
Commissioner Haddock.
So, that, the bottom line is, the schools are about 51%, we're about 25, 26% if I'm right, Holly, city's about 17 or something. So, when you look at your tax bill, Ms. Big Eagle, you'll kind of see where all your taxes are going, and we have been trying to, at the county, keep that bottom line for you. So, we, we can't help the market, as Ron says, but we are trying to help through Pennington County Housing. This board has, as a team, has committed funds to that, and that levy, just by the things we're doing, we're trying to keep it down for people. So, the schools and, and some of the other entities, maybe that's a, a good thing also, a very positive message that you have to move to the city and the school districts to visit with them as well, because it's making a difference. It takes all of us to make that levy go up, so everybody's got to do their part. So, anything you can do to help us as well will help you, too, so.
Certainly, thank you for your continued advocacy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Appreciate it. So, I have a motion and a second on the floor for option seven, further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you, Cindy. I would request two more options, or two more, two more motions.
No more options.
Wait a minute, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Yes, I, and I understand that.
I understand that we're going with option seven, but I would like a motion to approve the one and a half percent wage adjustment effective January 2nd, 2022.
Is there a motion?
That would be added to that motion. I think we can just say the one and a half adjustment added, will be added in January
2nd, 2022.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner LaCroy, second by Commissioner Haddock.
Yep.
Further discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, and then the final motion to actually approve this budget would be to utilize growth current year CPI and stored CPI in the calculation of the amounts to be levied, and to approve the resolution adopting the 2022 annual budget in the amount of $117,412,782 on collectible taxes at $4,36,113, miscellaneous revenues at $53,977,545, cash supplied at $16,198,116, and tax levied $51,273,234.
So, move. Got a motion by Commissioner Roskinak, second by Commissioner Haddock.
Everything Cindy said.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Pick a five-minute, Chairman?
No, five minutes.
So, move.
I got a motion to take five minutes.
Second.
Then a second.
Aye.
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 Motion carried. First back and second. Item 17, Mike Cool. And friends.
Yes.
Phone a friend.
Good morning, Mike Cool, Director of Billings and Grounds. At the last commission meeting, we had brought forth the bid results for the crisis stabilization unit. You continued that so that we could continue to work on funding sources, I should say, the sheriff and others. So, we're back requesting that we award the contract to RCS Construction for $5,308,000. Stand to answer any questions. Some of the previous discussion did cover the funding portion of this.
Okay, Commissioner LaCroy.
I'd move for approval.
Second. So, we've got a motion and a second to approve the, award the bid for the $5,308,000 to RCS Construction. Further discussion.
Um, Chair.
Commissioner Haddock.
Okay, so, I know we have 500 from Allen's raised 500, right? Tell me, tell me where all the funding sources are, Sheriff, please.
Yep. 500,000 city, 500,000 from another foundation, and then 300,000 from the county, and then Allen is here to speak to the other balance of the 300,000 between three other entities that intend to cover that.
So, we have...
That takes us to the 1.6.
May and three, and then we have, I thought the state gave us 4.6.
Well, it, correct.
So, that's...
But this, the 1.6 was to make up the gap that we had from the 4.6 the state gave us and the bids we received.
Okay, so, maybe I'm not understanding. Okay, so the state gave us 4.6, Sheriff?
Correct.
Okay, and then we raised, or not we, you guys raised 1.3.
1.6, correct.
1.6, including ours.
Yeah, because I thought it was 500 city, 500 foundation, and then 300, that's a million three.
And then 300 from Allen's group.
Plus what?
300,000 from Allen's group that he's working with, the three entities.
Okay.
That takes us to the 1.6.
Takes us to what?
To 1.6 plus the 4.6, 6.2.
Okay. And then the 5, 3 is just the, the baseline bid, is what we're doing?
Correct.
That's, that is the construction, value of the construction contract that we would have with RCS Construction. Overall, we estimate the overall project costs at 6.24 million dollars.
That's, that's what I needed. Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. So, I have a motion and a second to approve the award of the bid. I'll ask for public comments, or anybody that wants to speak on this from the public. Hearing none, back to the commission. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, Allen, would you like to, would you like to come forward and just...
I'd like to...
Waiting out here for a long time.
No, I, just to, one, thank you, and to thank Sheriff Tom and Barry Dyce, a team effort, I'm pulling this together. We're putting the final pieces with three organizations, timing, getting board meetings, some of those things in, kind of the final piece to button this up to, to reach us to the 1.6. But this, I think, as you all talked before, we're looking at a real potential game changer for the county, and quite frankly, for the western South Dakota counties, because this will serve a much greater geographic than just Pennington County. So, thank you all for your leadership, I greatly appreciate that, and look forward to seeing this come to fruition.
Thank you for your help, Allen. Appreciate it much.
Chairman, if we could have Barry come up with Allen for a sec, too. I know you've been pretty excited about helping and, and getting this moved forward as well. Barry, do you have any comments?
I, I guess I would say I would echo the comments of both Allen and Sheriff Tom, but this has been years in the making. Of course, it starts back from the Crisis Care Center and moving forward, and so I would also say that I appreciate your leadership and previous board's leadership when it came to approving the study of western South Dakota and behavioral health services and, and what we can do to help individuals stay in their hometowns and stay here and take care of them here. It's the best thing we can do for folks.
So, with your two leadership, Kevin Tom, who, if you need something done, and you want someone to go and... you want someone to go and, um, get it done, uh, Sheriff Tom is the one. And then, with your two help and your, uh, your knowledge, I mean, how can you say no? You worked very hard. You have made a difference in those areas since I have been in politics, and that's, what, 14, 15 years? So, um, I don't know, I just get very excited about what you guys are doing, what you have done, what have seen. Sometimes I kind of don't love diversion stuff sometimes, but it doesn't mean I don't love overall what you guys have done for our community. Um, we all get frustrated watching things, but bottom line is, what I've seen and what Pennington County has done, I don't think people understand how much you guys have done. Barry, Sheriff, just our community and the, uh, other people that have gave, um, in honest, in honestly or whatever, how much of a difference they have made. Because you have, in the care campuses, you have basically, we started it, one stop shop, not we, you guys. We, we approved it, but you guys did the work. And that's huge. So, you have crisis stabilization, you have some drug and alcohol addiction areas that we're helping with. Um, we have, um, detox. Now we have some step on crisis stabilization or crisis care. Do you know how huge that is for this community during COVID? I don't think people are getting that to a certain extent, because I'll keep saying as a, as a city council person, I didn't know how much did. I didn't know how much this area and even the sheriff, um, participation in what you guys do makes a huge difference. So, it's not bursting our bubble for commissioners, it's what you guys have done. You've done the work, we're just approving it. So, I don't know how we thank you enough. It's huge. And if you could be in the community and you could see the, the mental health issues, the, um, addiction issues, and the things that you guys are making a difference in, um, if, if people could see that a little bit more, they would be so excited and even more than they would be. Unless you have like a participant or a person, um, that has used your services, you really don't know what's happening, uh, with what you guys do. So, um, this is all about you guys and what you have done for Pennington County and what you have done for western South Dakota. So, I'll keep saying, it's huge. It's huge. Um, thank you for everything you do.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Ross Kinnock.
I think we need to look at the big picture. The big picture is, when this is done, we're going to have a mental health facility in western South Dakota. And we're not going to have to rely so much on hauling folks to Yankton where they're separated from their families during the time of crisis. So, I'm really anxious to have a mental health facility here in, uh, western South Dakota.
A lot of times we talk about foundations filling in the gap, but they do a lot more than that. Uh, in fact, you can look at this project for one. Uh, the foundations were on the ground running before we even talked about actually building a facility. And so, they have much more than just filled in the gap. Uh, they've been a complete part of this whole partnership. And government not necessarily is always the answer for all, all issues. And so, we do really appreciate what all has gone on from the, the foundations and stepping up, being a part of it, and following us through. So, thank you much. Uh, thank you to staff. I mean, they've done a great job on this overall. So, thank you.
Thank you. Great, greatly appreciated. And, as always, greatly appreciate the partnerships.
Commissioner LaCroy.
There ain't nothing more I can add to this, but, but I can say that you guys have done some outstanding work. And, and just to, to clarify, this is just going to happen overnight. I mean, this has been a 14, 15-year project that you guys have worked on. I can remember back to the Strength and Family Task Force, you guys were working on, all the way up to where you guys are today. Now, and, and, and Barry, you guys are rock, rock solid. Been there every meeting. So, I really appreciate your guys' persistence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Appreciate it much.
You bet.
Item 18, items from the Highway Department. Joe Miller. Can we turn the lights up a little bit?
Sorry, I'm like, okay, why not see where, no, it's the lights.
Just kind of some dim bulbs.
There.
There we go. Shine some light on the subject.
You're talking about us or the lights?
We're saving electricity.
Uh, good morning, Commission. I think it's still morning, isn't it?
Yeah, just about a couple hour, an hour or so. Um, Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Department. Uh, in front of you is a proposal to purchase two new John Deere motor graders from RDO. Uh, our, the sales representative came to us here probably about a month, month and a half ago and, and told us that they're looking at about a 10% increase if we let this go past November. Um, and we have about a six-month lead time on these things, um, currently, much like everything else, there's, they're in short supply, um, and it's taken a long time to get anything nowadays. So, uh, that's why this request is in front of you this time. They will not be delivered until, uh, '22. Just to give you an idea, since I've been here, we put our equipment plan in place in 2019. Uh, when we bought the, those, the original blades in 2019, they were 316,000 dollars. Uh, 2020, they were 321, uh, thousand dollars. Now, this year's price is 331,000 dollars. Uh, that, uh, I thought I had that percent. It, yeah, it's about a 3.2% increase over last year. Um, so if we wait till after November to, to get these under contract or get them on order, uh, we're going to look at it about a 10% increase, which is about, uh, 660,000 or 66,000 bucks. So, by doing this now, we'll save the taxpayers' dollars, um, and we'll get these things ordered, so.
I'll move approval.
I got a motion to approve. Is there a second? Any second by Commissioner Lassiter? Uh, Commissioner Ross Kinnock?
Just one question, Joe. So, we know that there's been an, an increase in new graders. Uh, what, what was our estimate two or three years ago on what we thought the used ones were worth? So, instead of 80, could we look at, uh, 120% of 80?
Well, so, it all depends on that market, right? So, right now, uh, the, the blade that we just sold back for this year's blade that we bought, uh, we estimated it 75,000 dollars and we got 92. So, if the market stays that way, yes, we'll get more than that 80, but I always like to be a little bit conservative on that, on that number, um, just so we don't show you guys that we're going to get 110,000 and we end up getting 70, right? So, um, we, I'd just like to be a little bit conservative on that. But you are correct, if the market stays the way it is, we can probably expect a little bit more for those two.
Okay, thanks.
Good, thank you. Good question, Ron. Uh, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Um, 18B was pulled from the agenda, so we are, go on to 19, uh, John Morrell.
Good morning again, Commissioners. John Morrell, Pennington County Human Resources. Um, so before you today, I brought a, a memo for consideration. I'm not making a recommendation on this in, in either manner, either for or against. What I wanted to do is provide some data, um, for the board to, to make a, a decision regarding extending, um, COVID-related paid sick leave benefits again. So, we've done it twice already this year, um, most recently in April, and that extension expires, uh, in a couple of weeks. So, through the end of September, so September 30th is the end of our current extension. What this would do is extend those benefits again through the remainder of the year, beginning October 1st and ending, um, the end of December. Um, but I wanted to give some details, if you will, on the background and how we've got to where we are today. Um, in 2020, we had 192 employees in the county that took advantage of this benefit. In 2020, it is also a, a reimbursable item, um, through the Affordable Care Act and other things that were happening last year, the Families First Coronavirus Response Act and other issues that, uh, were provided through the federal government. And again, 192 employees and about 188,000 dollars was spent in 2020. This year, under the extensions we've had so far, this is all voluntary on the part of the county, uh, with no, um, reimbursement, uh, option. Um, this is just expenses that the county has, has, uh, experienced. Um, through last week, Wednesday, we had 64 employees that qualified for this, and then a total of 64,107 dollars, um, that the county has paid in, uh, additional, um, COVID-related sick leave benefits. Um, the last two and a half weeks of August, we had 27 employees across the entire county, um, that tested positive, um, and had applied for benefits. Um, through the first two weeks and a day of this month, we have 30 employees now that have, uh, applied for and then approved to put through for, for COVID reimbursement. Um, again, that benefit expires in a couple of weeks on the 30th of September. Um, what I, I spoke about at the last meeting, um, was my concerns with, uh, people that, um, haven't done a, a lot to protect themselves or their families. So, you'll see that actually in the, the policy that I drafted here for your consideration is, I'm suggesting in addition, if we do decide to extend it, that we have an addition of, to be qualified to receive this, uh, this additional benefit, um, because we do provide sick leave vacation, holidays, those types of things to our employees already. But it would require that they have proof of vaccination, uh, in order to qualify for this, should we extend it for the last three months of the year. Um, and part of that was based upon data that Dustin shared with us at a recent, uh, board meeting. Part of it's based upon data that, uh, the state actually put out, um, this past week on the 15th. Um, out of the people that are hospitalized in South Dakota, um, 96, excuse me, 86% unvaccinated. Um, the people that are in ICUs, 93% unvaccinated. People that are on ventilators, 88% of them, unvaccinated. So, it's something that's easy for people to do, and I, I know that there's some exemptions that would be necessary, either for religion or for medical necessity. Um, I've worked with the state's attorney's office to actually develop the forms for people to apply for those exemptions. So, we have forms available should this be approved, uh, for an extension. And I brought copies for each of you if you're interested, um, in seeing those. Um, again, I'm, I'm not making a recommendation, I'm just providing details at this point. Um, it's been a good program for us so far. Uh, again, there's been a number of employees in the county that have, um, utilized it, and I think it's provided a good benefit. Um, so at this point, I'll, I'll stand for any questions.
First Chairman.
Commissioner Lassiter.
Um, Mr. Chairman, just for my, just to put this out there, I would have a concern if we decided to move forward and, and approve this extension based on item number three. Um, I don't know if I can agree that we, as a county, should say that the only reason why they get a benefit is if they've had a vaccination. We don't do that with any of our other medical concerns, if you will. We don't tell somebody they can't have their medical insurance through the county if they, if they're overweight and they're not eating right foods or anything of that nature. I think that's, that's an individual decision, um, just like, you know, choosing to ride a motorcycle without a helmet, all those other things. I don't, I don't think that's our role to get in there and then to say, well, if you get sick with this, we didn't do it with people who got sick with flu. If they miss time for flu, we don't say, hey, well, you didn't get the flu shot, so you don't get compensation either. I would have a big concern, um, to put that in there as policy, if we decide we're going to move forward and approve this particular, uh, extension. Uh, I'm, I'm not saying I'm for the extension, I'm not saying I'm against the extension at this moment, but I'm just talking the merits of the, the policy itself. I would have a big problem with item number three.
If I could, sure. Uh, just in response, and I, I don't disagree.
No, no, this way.
What I would say is, is this, with regard to the flu or any other medical condition, we have sick leave to take care of that. We grant the employees 96 hours of sick leave already annually.
Right.
Um, so again, we're not saying they can't use it. Um, this is a benefit that's not required. It's an additional cost to county. Um, and again, based upon the, the data that we've seen recently with vaccinated and unvaccinated people, um, being hospitalized and away from work. I, I think it's an easy thing to say, okay, we'll do this if. I'm not saying it's required. And again, it's just data. That's all it is. I'm not suggesting it.
And Mr. Chairman, one follow-up if you don't mind. Uh, and just to put it out there, uh, to the board, I sent, uh, a list of questions over to Dustin to, to either get me in contact with some of them, that I could ask a question to, because I've seen, I've been, I mean, 27 years in the medical field, I do a lot of research on this, I've been paying attention to this. Um, one of the, some of the questions that I did ask, and I know you put the percentage out here for the 86% unvaxxed, the 90%, 96% unvaxxed, and that's the ones in the ICU, if I remember correctly. Um, I asked Dustin to clarify, or if he could get from Monument, how they're classifying those. In other words, so, from what I've seen in other areas, individuals may have had their two shots or their one shot, but they didn't meet the 14 days, they're still considered unvaxxed, that they're classified unvaxxed even though they had the vaccination. So, I asked them clarifying questions on those to find out how Monument is actually tracking those. Are these individuals that have actually had either the Moderna or the Pfizer, the first, the one shot or the two shots, and that they just didn't meet the full 14 days to be considered fully vaxxed? How are they categorizing them? I asked them other questions about, how many of them came in specifically, uh, for one, uh, problem, and then tested negative when they came in, but four or five days later, as they're in the hospital, did they then test positive with COVID while they were in the hospital? So, I've asked them clarifying questions, so we can get a, get a better idea of what the, the true impact is, rather than hearing the 86% of the patients that are in the, the hospital are COVID patients. I get that, but there's also, there's some, there's some rule downs in those questions that I think are appropriate to ask before we say that this is the true impact of it. So, just so the board is aware, that's what I reached out to Dustin about to, to get clarification on those. So, if we're going to make decisions on something based on those numbers, we actually have better information for those numbers.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I got a question and a follow-up. John, right now with this, this leave that we pay, we, it's 80 hours.
Correct.
And not anybody else in the community has this that I'm aware of.
Correct.
Except for salaried employees in other places may get, may have this. What kind of require, are we requiring, uh, a test showing that it's positive so we know that the?
Yes, sir.
That's my first question.
Yes, sir. So, when they apply for this through the HR office, what I get is a document from their medical provider or from our local test facilities, and it shows that when they had the test, uh, when they received a notice and it was a positive or negative.
Okay. And the reason why I ask that is because the majority of the community that I know, nobody gets paid for when they get sick, like this, an extra day. And you just said, most of our employees get an additional 96 hours a year. So, you're talking, that's four weeks. I mean, I know it takes two weeks for, for the COVID recovery and, and not to be contagious, and, and that's part of the requirements of us to stay home. I think, uh, our employees ought to be really grateful, because there's a lot of places that don't have that.
Yes.
And, and I'm not going to get into this vaccination, non-vaccination debate, because it, it's a choice thing and let's not go there. I don't think we need, but I do think if you're going to get paid for it, we need to have proof that you, uh, tested positive for it, and you need to quarantine from a doctor. You know, I mean, that's part of a, I think, very important piece of that.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Haddcock.
So, if I could, I'd like to make a motion, then have a, a follow-up, if I could. So, my motion is to deny the temporary extension of expanded FEMA and paid sick leave through December 31st, 2021.
Commissioner Haddcock, I got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a second from, uh, Commissioner Lassiter, to deny. You want a follow-up?
Yes, sir. Um, only because we do have the sick leave. After listening to our, um, health, our human resource director, John, um, we take good care of our employees. If we did not have some of those benefits and some of those things to take care of them, I would probably think differently. I think we've done well, um, by our employees the last couple of years since this has happened, making sure that, um, we are keeping our building clean, safe, and, um, with our department heads, doing a great job of following up of what we need to do through this COVID, um, crisis that we're having. So, um, bottom line is, is I wouldn't mandate anything for anybody. I believe it's personal choice. Um, and I also, like I said, I leave it up to the department heads in their areas to be able to understand and know what their employees need and for COVID. But, like I said, I think we're, we're good for the paid sick leave, and, and I'm going to take your advice on that too, John. So, thank you.
Any further questions, comments?
If I could, sure. Yeah, I think there may be some people on the audience that would have some suggestions or some thoughts on this as well. So, I'm not sure that, I'll step out of the way.
Good morning, Commissioners. Janet Saylor, County Treasurer. I'm in agreement with, with Deb. The employees get 96 hours of sick leave a year. Some of the employees, not all of them, but there's employees that use their sick days just as soon as they get them. So, they need to start being a little more responsible and start saving up for things like COVID and other sicknesses. And Pennington County shouldn't have to, uh, we've been very generous with COVID to this point, but it's almost like we owe them to pay them for two weeks of COVID pay when they get COVID. So, I'm, I am saying- So I'm, I am saying that they need to take responsibility for themselves also, and it's not always up to the county to be responsible for them.
Okay, thank you, Jen. Anyone else? Seeing none, we've got a motion for the board. Any further discussion? All those in favor with the motion indicate by saying aye, which would deny the temporary extension.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Thanks, John. Items from the public. Any, any members of the public here that wish to address the commission on any subject matter that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'd take a motion to go to the Board of Adjustment.
So moved.
I've got a motion by Commissioner Laster and a second by Commissioner Haidcock to move to the Board of Adjustment. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. First item is A.
Item A is variance VA twenty-one dash twelve for elevated towers. Jonas Schneider is the agent. The request was to waive the, to waive the requirement, or, excuse me, to waive the request that prior to settlement of a building permit and easement be obtained from the property owner to the west to allow buffer area for the proposed telecommunications tower. This variance was previously approved by the board with that condition, and the applicant had requested that we bring this back in front of the board to remove that condition. They've since withdrawn that request, and they would like the variance to stand with the condition. So the original condition, the twenty-one twelve, took that.
Okay, I've got, I've got a motion by Commissioner LaCroy, second by Commissioner Haidcock to withdraw the variance application request. Any further discussion?
So just for clarification, they still want the variance, but with the easement. So the request was to remove the requirement to have the easement, but they want the original motion to stand.
Okay, so the motion is to approve the request to withdraw the variance application, requesting the removal of the condition that required the applicant to obtain an easement and sustain the original approval of variance VA twenty-one dash twelve with one condition.
Correct.
That was my motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B.
Item B is variance VA twenty-one dash twenty-four for Richard and Lynn Beasley to reduce the section line setback from fifty-eight feet to thirty-three feet to build a single-family residence. This request was continued from the September seventh, twenty-twenty-one Board of Commissioners meeting. Staff is still recommending denial of this variance, as there is no special conditions on the property that would excuse literal enforcement of the Pennington County's opening ordinance, section two oh four. Staff did perform a site visit on this property, and we still did not find a special condition that existed on this property. We still believe that there is ample space to construct a single-family residence and still meet the fifty-eight foot setback.
So this issue was continued from the last meeting to give the opportunity for commission members to go actually look at the property. Commissioner Haidcock.
Well, maybe make this easier. I have visited with Mr. Beasley, and at this time, told him that this board, me personally and probably this board at fifty-eight feet, based on some of the issues, that it probably wouldn't be approved, that there would be a better way to get this done through working with the planning department, and he agreed. So unless he's here today, I think we can go ahead and move denial, or if I can make that motion, just based on the conversation with Mr. Beasley, unless.
Accept that as a motion, is there a second? Second. And a second from Commissioner Ross Knack for the discussion.
Can I ask one more question, sir? Has he called you at all, Brittany, to work with you guys on what's coming next for this property?
He did stop into the office and spoke with Jerry. He did mention that he was thinking of withdrawing his application. Jerry had indicated to him that he needed to submit something in writing to our office about that request. We did not receive it before this meeting, so we moved forward, because we typically don't withdraw unless we get it in writing.
Thank you. And at first I was for this, and then speaking with the Mr. Bordmeyer, kind of found in between there could be a better solution. I thought they needed to work together on that. So for me personally, I figured, once I looked at it, I was like, okay, we should do this, we could work this out. And at this point, like I told Mr. Beasley, based on second findings and doing more research, that he could still build the house in where he wanted to, it just had to be backed off a little bit more. So that was my personal opinion. So for me, it was denial at that time, and I did tell Mr. Beasley my opinion, not this board's opinion, so.
So the motion is to support the decision of the planning department and deny the variance request.
Yes, sir.
Do I have a motion and a second for the discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item C.
Cody Sack, environmental planner. Item C is variance VA twenty-one dash twenty-eight. It is to reduce the minimum required lot size from three acres to two-point-three-five acres in a rural residential district. The applicant and landowner is Connie and Detlev Prouche. The agent is Fist Land Serving. Janelle's in the audience if there's any questions. The location of the property is at two-three-nine-eight-four Palmer Gulch Road. It involves two-point-three-five acres, and currently, current land use is residential. When reviewing variances, we take a two-pronged approach for approval. For prong number one, whether granting the variance from its counter to public interest, number one, no, the request is not a blight on the neighborhood and does not appear to be a threat or nuisance. Number two, the subject property is rural residential district. The surrounding properties are zoned rural residential district with lot sizes over three acres with residential uses. There is one lot that is under the three-acre requirement that is legal, non-conforming. Number three, no zoning ordinance for rural residential district requires a three-acre lot size. Number four, the current comprehensive plan identifies the property as rural residential district, which requires a three-acre lot size. Proposed lot two will be two-point-three-five acres. Number five, no lot size does not harm the public safety, health, or general welfare of the public. And for prong number two, whether special conditions exist to grant the variance, except from their nistopography, citing or alike, does not affect the zoning or lot size of the property, the applicant could rezonate to meet the zoning ordinance. Currently on the property, there is a single-family residence, a four-hundred-and-thirty-two-foot tool shed, and a twenty-four-by-thirty-eight detached garage, all of which have proper building permits. There is a onsite wastewater treatment system that is current on the operating permit. This was routed around for near the department review, there were no comments or concerns received. Layout plan LPL twenty-one dash fifty-three will be heard later at this meeting. The applicant could rezonate either low-density residential district or suburban residential district to meet the lot size requirement. Both zoning districts allow the same uses as rural residential districts, so rezoning would not allow or grant any substantially different uses in the current area. So with that, staff is recommending denial. There is no special condition that exists to grant the variance request, and the applicant could rezonate to meet the ordinance.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Ross Knack.
So Cody, does a special condition exist in, and I say it does, and my rationale is that in nineteen eighty-seven, when this was planted, that north lot and that south lot should have been given an ID, and at that time, they would have been a lot size that they would have been, they would have fit the appropriate zoning. So, you know, there again, to me, it's subjective. And to me, the, the exception on this is just the fact that this particular lot is totally usable, only it's, it's just, the physical restraint is the fact that it's about point-two-five acres smaller than it should be. I could go for the zoning, rezoning, but then you'd be spot zoning, and I'd rather do this variance today than spot zoning, because it's always been my understanding that your department doesn't like spot zoning.
So, so spot zoning, if you look in the packet, we actually included the APA dictionary definition of spot zoning. Spot zoning would be you have a residential area and you put a commercial zoning or an industrial zoning, that would be totally different than the uses in the area. The property is, the future land use is rural residential district. If you look at rural residential district, suburban residential district, and low density, they all allow the same ten uses, the only difference is setback and lot size requirement. So the uses are the same, they're not going to get any granted use that's different or that would harm the area, it's just that. And with it, the, the property is currently zoned correctly, they're looking at subdividing it, so that's where that goes, that two, the Laker, sorry, the lot size goes under that three acres.
So the probability of being rezoned so that it would, the two-point-three-five would fit appropriately, there's a good probability of that rezoning happening?
Staff would recommend approval of that rezon, yes. Thank you.
Well, Chairman.
Commissioner, we do have a person on Zoom also that would like to speak.
I guess, for me, it'd be more that I would have them go back, because that's why we're having so many variances, is we're, we're not keeping it into the area it's supposed to be. So the, to leave it like it is at the low density, or is rural low density now?
So rural used to be what low density was with that three-acre requirement. Now low-density residential is a half-acre requirement, and suburban is an acre with a.
Well, this needs to be rural, not low-density?
So it needs to be low-density. It's currently rural, which requires three acres. Under the, the zoning ordinance changed in February, so that lot size requirement changed. The rural residential takes the place of the old low-density residential, and the new low-density residential district changed to half, a half-acre lot size, so they'd have to go to the rural, the low-density residential or the suburban.
Okay, so they're going from rural, three acres, to suburban. And if you look at future man, land use, it's all low-density, or what is now, the three acres, three-acre lots. So then they would be taking the two-point-three area into suburban residential, which is all yellow, which is three acres. So if it didn't have all of that around there, it'd probably be different for me, but I think they can rezonate and still do what they need to do on their property.
Mr. Chair.
Unless I'm missing something, so.
Commissioner Ross.
Just want to clarify, it's currently zoned rural residential? Is that the proper name for the yellow?
Correct, yes.
Not suburban, but rural, there's a big difference.
Correct. I thought, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And then down below that, that's limited egg, ten acres or bigger?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So then you're saying if they rezoned to low-density residential, what color would that be?
It would actually be orange. There's currently no properties in Pennington County that are low-density residential, because it's actually a new zoning district, so.
So that would be something that you'd consider?
Staff would consider an approval.
I guess you're, okay, Chairman, you're confusing me, because low-density and your rural residential and your, so you don't have anything marked except yellow on this whole thing. So this whole area is yellow, and what is that? It says low-density.
That's.
This map I've got, the yellow is all low-density, when I read it the other day as well, so that's why I was saying, I don't know if you guys saw this, but it says low-density.
It's rural residential, though. The, the yellow is rural residential.
Okay, so that's where I'm getting confused. So rural is how many acres then? It's three acres.
Thirty acres.
Okay.
And low-density is a half-acre.
Okay, low-density is half-acre. So these are half-acre or they're three acres?
So those are currently over three acres. What they're proposing to do is subdivide this, this is lot two.
Right.
So the lot two, the proposed lot two does not meet the three-acre requirement.
It's the two-point-three-five.
Yes, so they're looking at getting the lot size variant for that proposed lot.
So they would turn into low-density.
Staff's recommending that they rezonate to either low-density or suburban residential. They allow the same uses, and it meets the lot size requirement.
Because they're not rural anymore, like all the yellow is.
They don't, they don't meet the requirement of the, the three-acre requirement that the yellow requires.
Right, which is rural.
Correct.
Okay, so just so, sorry, because it's not marked like that, you guys, so it's confusing me. So the whole area is rural in yellow, they want to go into orange.
They, they want to, no, they're requesting a lot size variance to stay the yellow.
Which is under the half-acre, which is low-density.
Which, the, the yellow's the three acres, they want, they're, this is a lot size variance to, to have a lot under that three-acre requirement.
I'll just say this is confusing, because you guys have this marked wrong, so I'm not, I can't, I'm, I'm not distinguishing it very well, because you have everything under low-density and you're calling it rural now, but you didn't change your map, you didn't change the colors. Cody, do you want to see the map?
Yeah.
Read your map.
Janelle, come on for me.
So that's all the same.
Yeah, I think, I think that's actually that orange.
Yeah, there's no orange in here.
That's what, that's what I'm saying, this yellow is, like, didn't show.
Hey.
Janelle, you've worked on this.
I have. Good morning, Janelle Fink with KTM, and I'm here with Mr. and Mrs. Prouche. I think maybe we need to take just a small step back and kind of summarize or overview what we're looking at here, and we have three variances for you today, and I would kind of like to touch, because this is all the same project, so if you'd allow me to kind of touch on them.
Absolutely.
So we can address these comprehensively. So the Prouches currently own what is one parcel, and I know that my pointer doesn't show up on your screen, so this is actually all one lot. In nineteen eighty-seven, they platted this lot, and this is railroad right-of-way for the eighteen-eighty train, Black Hill Central Railroad, runs right through here. Today, you would not plat a single lot that is divided or separated by right-of-way. I contend that there's already two lots there, it was just never identified as such. If you have a sheet cake and you take the center out of it, you give it to somebody else to use or eat, you don't have one piece of sheet cake anymore, you have two separate pieces. That's what you have here, is this, this portion here, and then this portion south of the railroad. So what the Prouches are hoping to do, their residence is right here, Mrs. Prouche's sister would like to purchase or be able to move into this particular area over here, which happens to be two-point-three-five acres, instead of the three for this current zoning designation. And so that's what we're asking, that's the relationship, you have a layout plan before you that will be for the division of this. We have three variances, we want to reduce the lot size for that piece that's already physically separated and has been since nineteen eighty-seven. We want that to remain the current zoning designation of rural residential, even though it's two-point-three-five acres instead of the three. Our second variance request is to waive the requirement to improve undeveloped section line right-of-way that runs across the south portion of the property. This is section line here. There's already access here, these lots are developed, and the access comes from the south to get to all of these properties here. So there's no need for this section line right-of-way. And we are also asking, the third variance that we'll talk about, is to waive the improvements for this portion of Palmer Gulch Road, which really functions as a driveway. There's currently a sign here that says end of county road or county maintained road, and then it turns into a driveway here. The Prouche's sister would like to utilize this area for their driveway and not have to develop this segment that goes to nowhere and serves no one other than these two lots. Again, these lots to the south have access developed from, to the south. Now, as far as the zoning, I'm going to come back to the request that we're talking about now. Holly, did we have them?
Yeah, they have a copy of that email and all of the maps, and they are loaded on the podium for you.
So Janelle, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Okay, so where's access to this lot now? Is that up at the?
This lot drives right down here and access is this. This is an existing driveway right here, and so that's how that lot is served, and the Prouches would use it in essentially the same driveway. And again, this is a county maintained or improved road at this portion here, and stopping the traffic north of the railroad is probably a better idea than funneling all the traffic to the south and having it turn around, it's better to turn around before the railroad.
So is that a second access for anybody?
Um, when you say a second access for anybody, this road dead-ends right here, it doesn't go anywhere, so.
Unless, unless they improved it, then it'd be an access for somebody to come on.
Even if you, it doesn't go anywhere, these lots are platted here with access to the south that serves these lots, so it wouldn't go anywhere.
So they have one access to serve those lots, and if they developed it, they could use that road later for the second access, or not?
No, they can access right here.
Mr. Chair.
What I'm saying is that. What I'm saying is that Palmer Gulch Road is already a road.
Right.
Right?
Correct.
And you want to stop the road at that development, and then these people at the bottom that you said already have an access?
Yeah.
They have one access?
They're, they access off of Old Hill City Road and then there's a whole subdivision here, um...
That's, that's what I'm saying, so later if this is developed and we don't have them do anything to the road, that actually could be a road to a development later on the bottom half.
It's already, no, it, this is already developed here. Can you pull up, I don't, she said it was loaded. I think if we can, I provided a cou, excuse me, a couple of overheads, let's go back, back.
So can I ask Joe something? Um, Joe, on that Palmer Gulch Road, do you believe that's just serving as a driveway? Or it's something that doesn't need to be improved because it's just for that one lot?
Can you scroll up just a little bit?
Cody, I'm gonna have, after you're done.
Okay, here we go.
Hold on, Janelle, I'm gonna have, um...
Like I said, refresh me, I was having a conversation out in the hallway, what, what am I?
So Palmer Gulch Road, bring the map.
Stops right here.
Okay, bring that last one up that you had, Cody.
Mr. Chair, can I point something out to Deb?
Sure.
In 2011, Jim sculled about 211 acres and he subdivided that. Those are 10 acre lots. Each one of them lots is accessed by, uh, probably a 20 foot paved road with a paved cul-de-sac. And to further the extension of Palmer Gulch, you'd literally have to go into a planted lot, which I don't think is legal.
The road is platted?
He's talking, yeah, Ron's talking about that, or excuse me, Mr. Ross Connect, is about the access here, 10 load provides access to all of these properties here, and they take access off of Old Hill City Road. Palmer ends right here, these lots already have their own developed access.
So I'm going to ask something. Those are 10 acre lots and you don't believe ever that those would be developed? I, I don't believe that. I think you start putting a driveway on Palmer Gulch Road with 10 acre lots next to it and saying it's just going to be a driveway? We end up later inheriting the driveway and having to put a road there and at our expense, which I've seen over and over again, and then also it goes on to, um, from a road to a driveway? Then they start telling us that we have to plow that because it's actually Palmer Gulch Road. So maybe I'm incorrect, but, uh, maybe Joe can fill me in on Palmer Gulch Road, um, they want to make that a driveway access.
Could I actually, Megan Crocker for the State's Attorney, can we take each variance one at a time, so that way the record is clear? Um, because I want the board's decision to be clear for each.
We will take each one separately, but we allowed for discussion on all of them, since they all pertain to the same thing.
Okay, Joe.
All right, so what is the question here? Uh, from my understanding...
Palmer Gulch Road, does, they're asking for a variance not to improve it because it's just going to be a driveway?
After the train tracks, right?
This segment here, yep.
So to me, it looks like it's all public right of way, correct?
Correct.
Uh, Sean, what was our comment on that?
She wanted it improved and a turnaround.
Correct, so, you know, Sean and Kaylee looked deeply into these things in our office. Uh, and I would back their recommendation that it does, you know, it would need to be improved, uh, to meet the current what is there, um, and a turnaround, you know, Jerome Harvey would be able to speak to the turnaround. You get up there with a fire truck or something and not be able to turn around where you need to, um, so.
I just think when you, when you take a road, how, what's the width of a road now, Joe?
What's the width of that road right now? I don't, I couldn't answer that question at all.
Janelle, do you know?
The driveway portion's probably about 18 feet.
No, before that.
The road north on, from the railroad tracks is probably in the 20 to 24 foot. It kind of varies a little bit.
Typically a gravel road, you want it to be 24 foot, uh, for maintenance, 20 to, 22 to 24 foot for maintenance with a 16 foot mow ward.
Yeah, because if, for me, if you're going to go into 10 acre lots right next to it, it's not going to stay 10 acre lots. Um, you might improve it now, but then the county ends up getting stuck with, okay, this was our driveway, you didn't make us improve it. Now you guys need the access to this, um, development, it's 24 foot. So the county's ended up with some of the driveways, and we've had big discussions on this over the years, Janelle, where we ended up having to improve those driveways because we didn't have the residents do it. So, um, the other variances I could probably live with, but the road for me, I think we keep doing it over and over again and we're making the expense of all the taxpayers on a, on the driveway instead of just these, uh, certain people that want their houses built in these areas.
Commissioner Roskin.
Uh, just want to point out that when you go across the railroad tracks, you'll see a green utility box right there, there is a driveway. That driveway will probably access that 2.35 acres and this road to nowhere will basically never be used. So I, I really don't see any sense, but I would suggest if they develop that in the future, that if they use that for a driveway, that there'd be some kind of a turnaround or the hammer where a fire apparatus could get in there and turn around. That would, just the recommendation.
Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Uh, so I, I would just offer up a compromise, uh, much like we did on 153rd out east of town here. Uh, compromise compared to building to ordinance 14, we allowed those individuals to build a 16 foot roadway with two foot ditches, uh, four to one in slopes and three to one back slopes. Uh, that compromise worked out well out there, same sort of situation, had multiple lots at the end of it. Um, so that you build a 16 foot roadway with those proper ditches with the, with the right of way, it's fairly easy in the future if, you know, like Mr. Ross Connect is saying, if there's a stipulation on this, that if those 10 acre lots are subdivided in the future, um, that it must be improved to, to meet ordinance 14 at that time, but, um, to basically meet a lesser version of the ordinance 14 at this time.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
So Joe, with that road that you just talked about, would that just be to the point where they would drive off into that lot? I mean, it wouldn't just go where it dead ends to the, uh, to the lots that Scull developed back in 2011? Because I don't know, uh, that's a dead end road.
Right now.
So, can I point out something?
Sure, go ahead.
There's a road here called Johnson Drive, right here. There's also a road here called Eddie Load Road. Currently, most people that are turning around, where, where the county sign is that says end of county road, is they turn, is, is they pull into this approach, turn around and back out. And so they're already performing that turnaround, it's not a developed cul-de-sac. But there is a road in this location here. I had some other exhibits that I was hoping we could, you know, that would show up and we could kind of demonstrate that. But it seems to make more sense to, if there's a turnaround to take place, that it take place north of the railroad tracks rather than encouraging traffic to go all the way down to the end to turn around.
But Janelle, you've known over and over again, whether it's city or county, we end up enveloping these areas and we have no roads. So we end up having these roads that have driveways or haven't been improved because we decide that Ms. Holly needs to have her house right there and she's only going to use this little piece, so I'm going to leave the rest of the road, and then we have a fight in the end of trying to improve the road. They're splitting lots so they can have somebody live there, we're going to give a variance to that. It, or we might give a variance to that. They want the, not to put the turnaround in there. If you had that road for fire protection or otherwise, it also helps protect the fire or a fireman to get in that second access to get in those other 10 acre lots. So there's a lot of safety factor by us not finishing roads and having the county end up doing this or, um, having to fight with the next person that has another lot and says, oh, no, um, they didn't do it last time, we shouldn't have to do it either. So I've seen this over and over again, and I'm going to keep fighting for some of these roads to be done, at least um, with a compromise, which I think is, is pretty good at 16 foot. To say it's to nowhere, um, that's, it, it is to somewhere. And the fire protection, um, I, I don't believe they'll agree with you, that it goes to nowhere. I think it's going to be huge for, the closer the fire trucks can get on a paved road, um, the better it's going to be.
Chair, if I may?
So?
Uh, Sean.
Sean Smith, Pennington County Highway. Um, again, this is public right of way. It ends at that section line, which is 66 foot of public right of way.
Okay.
That is still public right of way, so you still have access down to public right of way with that section line. That's where we were proposing that turnaround be utilizing that 66 foot of public right of way to put that T hammerhead, if you will, at the end there. So again, you're allowing, there is access to pub, that is public right of way. This isn't a driveway, this is public right of way through there. That's, that's where we're looking, yeah, the compromise is a 16 foot, we would be okay with, but, I mean, this is, we're talking public right of way, not a driveway here. This, I mean, yes, essentially it's a driveway, but this is public right of way down to a section line, which is again, public right of way.
Undeveloped.
Yeah.
One other thing, the Palmer Gulch Road is a county maintained road as well, so.
Only to this point, only to this point.
That is correct, but currently it is a county maintained road up until that point. The, the, the right of way goes down another, it looks like quarter mile, um, so.
Okay, is there more questions before we go back? Okay, so now, now we'll go back and take it one at a time.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
I move to approve variance VA 21 dash 24.
Second.
Oh, wait a minute.
What number is that?
You're on the wrong one. Uh, are you looking at 21, 28?
Yeah.
No, it's item C, Ron. You just did Beasley's.
Okay, I'm, I'm looking at the, approve the, uh...
Item C.
The variance.
21, 28.
To divide those two lots. That's the one I'm making a motion on for approval.
So that's VA 21 dash 28?
Excuse me, Chair, VA 21, 28.
Okay, I've got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second for the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item D. This is, uh, 21 subdivision regulation variance, 21 dash 21.
And this is the road?
Uh, this is the section line.
Pardon me, Cody?
Sorry, say again?
This is what?
This is the, the section line to not dedicate or improve this section line.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
Uh, I approve, uh, or I agree with the staff's finding for an approval on this particular variance.
So that's a motion?
Second.
I've got a motion and a second, uh, to approve, uh, SV 21 dash 21.
The Chairman.
Commissioner Adcock.
Okay, Cody, this is for the turnaround?
This, this is to not dedicate or approve the, this southern section line and staff's approval is based on constructing a turnaround down that section.
I can, yeah, thank you, sir.
Further questions? All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Item E.
Chairman.
Commissioner Adcock.
Um, are the applicants here?
Yes.
So Joe, can you tell me those standards again? Um, that would be my motion on this road, the 16 foot with the ditches, um, on this road.
So it would be, uh, what we approved for 153rd or what you, excuse me, what you guys approved for 153rd was a 16 foot road do, road top with two foot ditches with a four to one in slope, three to one back slope. Um, and I believe it was four, I don't remember the depth of gravel, I think it was four or six inches. I think it was four inches, wasn't it, Sean? Four inches of gravel on top.
So on this, I'll move approval with those, that stipulation on the road.
Second. I've got a motion and a second. Oh, so to, so to add those stipulations, so do we have that in writing for Kara?
I'm going to get it from Joe.
Okay.
She's going to email it to me.
Okay, okay. Further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item F.
Good morning, Commissioner Chutima Saboon, Planning Department. Item F is a variance request, VA 21 dash 30, to allow an accessory structure, a carport, to be located in the front yard of a residential zoning district less than one acre in size. The applicants and landowners are Fred and Leanne Carl. Mr. Carl is here in the audience if you have any question. Staff utilized two, two-pronged approach to base their recommendation. Prong one, whether, whether granting the variance run counter to the public interest. Criteria one, no, the request does not appear to be a threat of nuisance to the neighborhood. Criteria two, no, the request that used appears to conform to the neighborhood as there are other accessory structures, um, in the front yards. Criteria three, no, accessory str, accessory buildings shall not be located in any required front yard in residential zoning districts less than one acre. The subject property is 0.8 acre. Criteria five, no, the request does not harm any pub, uh, does not harm the public safety, health and gen, or general welfare of the community. Prong two, whether spatial conditions exist to grant a variance? Yes, topography is sloping, the only flat buildable area is in, is within the front yard and the side yard. However, the placement of the on-site water treatment system is located on the side yard. Physical conditions exist that would warrant approval of this request.
I'm going to move approval to Chutima.
I've got a motion to, to approve, uh, and a second by Commissioner Lester. Commissioner Adcock, if you have something?
Based on staff findings, sir.
Okay, further discussion? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, Chutima.
Item G.
Morning Commissioners, Jason Thunison, Deputy Planning Director. Ent, item G is variance 21 dash 29 to reduce the minimum required lot size from 10 acres to 2.254 acre for a well lot. The applicant is Casey Skyberg under Sudbury Ranch Holding, Land Holding LLC. Location of the property is off of Neck Yoke Road and the end of Clydesdale Road and Sudbury Ranch Road. It's currently zoned agriculture district and it is vacant of any structures or utilities. And there's no special flood hazard area on the property. Uh, staff does utilize a two-pronged approach when basing their recommendations for a variance request. Uh, the first one, does it injure the neighborhood? Staff found that granting the variance will not injure the neighborhood. Uh, next, does it conform to the neighborhood? The neighborhood is owned agriculture district and utilized for large lot residential purposes. Subject property will be utilized as a well lot supporting the subdivision. Therefore, it conforms to the established uses of the neighborhood. Number three, does it conform to the general purpose of the zoning ordinance? Staff found no Pennington County zoning ordinance requires a 10 acre minimum lot size in an agriculture district. Number four, does it conform to the comprehensive plan currently in place? Staff found that it does not. Future land use designations for the subject property is a ranchette, which requires a five acre minimum lot size. And lastly, number five, does it harm the public safety, health or general welfare of the community? Staff found no. Allowing a well lot to be less than 10 acres in an agriculture district will not har, harm the public safety, health or general welfare of the community. Uh, prong two determines whether special conditions exist that would warrant granting the variance. Uh, staff found that there is no, uh, there's no special condition that would warrant approval. The subject property is, excuse me, is forested meadows without any exceptional narrowness, topography or sighting. There's no special conditions that would warrant granting this variance. As it's, so, as it sits today, the property is vacant of any structures or utilities. Uh, the proposed well lot is on the screen, uh, it is proposed lot three. Uh, staff did not receive any objections or concerns, however, we did receive, uh, three to four emails from concerned citizens in the neighborhood. Uh, with that, staff recommends denial. There are no special conditions that would exist, or that exist to grant this variance request. However, if the Board of Adjustment disagrees and approves the request, staff does not recommend any conditions being included.
Jason, is Casey Skyberg or somebody from Sudbury Ranch Land Holdings in the audience?
His agent is here, Dana Foreman.
Would you like to speak on this?
I'm Dana Foreman with K L J Engineers, representing, uh, Casey Skyberg on this development. Uh, thank you for having me. Um, the reason for the, the well lot is really a housekeeping of, of trying to designate a specific well lot rather than having it be on, um, any of the property, any of the other lots that would eventually have homes on them. Um, so that, that's our intent here, is just to have it be its own designated lot.
So this well is designed to serve how many properties then?
It'll be designed to serve the, um, ten properties that we have proposed for the plan.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
So Cody, if a well lot's only point-two-five acres, it's pretty much limited to a well lot, right?
Correct.
And it, it's not big enough to develop any other way?
That's Jason.
Or, excuse me, Jason. So if my, if, if I'm, if I'm, if my research, my research shows that that property, that hundred-and-two acres, was purchased in two thousand twenty-one for one million five-hundred-thousand. So that equates to fourteen thousand seven-hundred-and-five dollars per acre. So to do a ten-acre well lot, uh, I think I can see where they're coming from. They don't want to spend or have a piece of land that could potentially be large enough for a single-family home, be dedicated to only a well, if I'm looking at this right. I'm just trying to look at both sides here.
Right.
And I think that's why they wanna go to a lot that would be big enough to put a well in and service that well in the future, if I understand that right.
That, that's correct. Uh, the well is actually already constructed there and permitted through the state, um, so it's, it's just enough space to have the well lot there and maintain the well.
Okay. I also have a speaker request from Patricia Henderson. Uh, Patricia in the audience? Come on forward.
Good morning Commissioners. Um, I'm actually resident, um, we have property, we have property on Neck Oak Road, and just wanted to tell you all a little bit my, about my story and why I posed the development of this, um, of this neighborhood here. I graduated from Yale University with a degree of Medicine in Public Health, and married a Lakota man from this area, so together we, um, have raised our family here. Um, when you talk about mental health, that's certainly an area that is very, very important to me. We moved into, uh, necky, our property on Neck Oak Road in two thousand two, when I was dealing with mental illness. My family had been forcibly relocated on the Navajo Nation. So I used this road as a way to really find my, uh, I guess, my belonging, because certainly that was stripped from me, um, during that time period when I was at Yale. So, I, I tell my kids I reburied my umbilical cord, because according to the Navajo language, home is where your umbilical cord is buried. So the fact that I was forced from that, I did it here, and it is very, very special. It's sacred, not only to me, but to my family, to my husband. We go there for ceremonial purposes, um, my husband, I said, is Okoto, so we have sage and just kind of bringing all friends to that area that is very special. So I certainly object to that, um, to the development. In addition, we're talking about water, water is limited in that area, and, and all these lots in this area are more than tw, um, ten acres, so the developer is wanting to decrease it to, what is it? Yeah, with, within, yeah, within that range, but it's just the traffic and everything is an issue for us. So I just wanted to make my voice be heard this morning, and, um, I really do appreciate everything that you're doing as Commissioners, so, thank you.
Okay, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yeah.
How do you see a wa, a, a well lot impacting that community negative, negatively? Other than, other than the water issue, I'm talking about the lot size as if it's dedicated for a well to serve that community, how do you see that specifically negatively impacting that community?
I mean, there's like beautiful wildlife that is hap, that happens there, there's cows, there's, um, deer, just, it would totally, developing that area would certainly obstruct to the habitat already that is in existence. So, um, and then we just don't know, I mean, my husband and I talk about just the artifacts that can be found there from native, um, dwellings, because these are the original lands of the Lakota people, so have they talked to the elders about just more development? I guess from that perspective, I'm kind of looking at it, not just to make money, but to, to look at a holistic perspective in development of these lands.
Any further discussion, uh, questions for?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
I think, uh, at stake here is just, uh, one particular lot and the size of it, not the, not necessarily the subdivision in whole.
So ma'am, do you, sorry to interrupt, ma'am, do you know that those other lots are eleven acres? It's just this one lot to build the well for those eleven acres so they have water? Did you know that?
No.
Aren't they eleven-acre lots?
Uh, ten-plus, yeah.
You see what I'm saying? So this, he's not making all of the development, two-point-whatever acres?
Point-two-five.
He, he's actually, those are eleven-acre lots, and this is just for a well, so those lots have water? Did you know that?
We were under, at least I'm not sure who else is from the community that is here, but we were under the assumption that...
That all those lots are gonna be lower?
Yeah.
Okay, so honey, it's, it's eleven-acre lots, and he just needs a smaller portion to put a well on. So not all those lots, if I'm correct, are that proportion, it's just this one lot for the well. So they are staying within, in fact, they're eleven acres, not ten acres?
Mm-hmm.
So it's, it's doing exactly what you said, except for they need some water. Make sense?
Makes sense to me now.
Okay, thank you.
So, and the well is actually already there. It's a matter, it's a matter of carving out the lot now that where the well is at.
So somebody's making a lot of money right now, potentially.
Well, um, they're doing what you, they're finding their home or their space in, in that space like you did, and he needs the water to make those spaces happen for other people as well.
If this gets approved, could I make a recommendation? Um, give the name, a native name. All the roads where we live are named after white people, and it's, yeah.
And maybe a suggestion to the developer, that would be awesome?
Yeah.
And, uh, they would probably take that suggestion if you, if you did the same, uh, story and the same things and what that meant to you and what that means to the people around there with, with the names on there, ma'am.
Yeah.
Okay.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to comment relatively?
My name is Lynn Simmons. I'm the closest resident to this proposed development. Uh, the names are a done deal, they're already, it's already named. Um, the, part of the problem is that the language in the public notice in the newspaper was very nonspecific. Um, it asked for variance to reduce lot size from ten acres to a quarter acre, okay? We now take it to mean that he needs a single, um, lot for his well, but there's no stipulation that no house will be built on that small. It's eleven thousand square feet plus, has plenty of room to put a house down, okay? Um, I'm in agreement with Dr. Henderson in that there's, there's a lot to be lost in putting this subdivision in here. He has to lengthen the lot-line road substantially, um, and in so doing, he'll have to destroy hundreds of trees, okay, that go down that lot-line in order to get to what's now called Sudbury Court. Um, I imagine he's within his rights to do it, but, um, the, the neighborhood is not happy about that, um, either. The, you know, this could be done without dropping the lot size to a quarter acre, he could put it on the lot it's currently on and just have an easement such that access could be obtained to the, to the lot. In, in any case, we neighbors would specifically request that the language be tightened considerably, such that no further subdivision of these lots would be done, and that no house be built on this well lot, even though it looks small there, there's plenty of room to put a house on that, okay? Most people in this country have houses or dwellings on far smaller piece of land than that.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Roskin.
If we were to approve this, that would definitely be one of the conditions, that that lot could only be used for a well and servicing a well, and under no condition could it ever be developed.
Commissioner Adcock.
So Chairman, um, number one, I don't have a problem with that, making it just a well lot, but in the future, um, you don't know, we don't know in fifty years what's gonna happen, or twenty years. Number two, um, I'm not in favor of telling any resident they, they can't further develop their lots, because the first thing I see is the person up here, not you personally, come back and they want to subdivide their lot, and some of the people here haven't been there, so I'm not telling anybody what to do with their land that way and, and that they can't other, further subdivide, 'cause you guys might all do that in the future as well, so...
No, we won't, okay? Excuse me, the, this land is all under covenants, and I know that you don't, as a commission, address covenants, but the neighborhood will address covenants from a legal standpoint if there's any move to drop additionally below ten-acre lots. That's the sort of place it is, that's why we're all out there, so that we have...
I'm gonna finish talking? Okay, thank you, and then I'll ask you your question.
So that we all have a little space on which to put our residents.
So, bottom line is, um, with the lot for the well, um, good with that. Um, unfortunately, when you don't own the land, you can't really tell people what to do with their land. So, do I try to make it so it's like your ten-acre lots, personally? I see that it's eleven acres. Some people didn't understand the eleven acres, they thought they were making this a two-point-three, uh, subdivision. So, bottom line is, if you don't own the land, um, what we try to do as a commission, if I could speak for us, is we try to do what's happening in the area. So I think we're doing that with actually allowing someone to have a well, um, and improve that lot for that well in order for those people to have the water that they need in that area. So, uh, that's my opinion, um, and I wouldn't do that to you, so I wouldn't do that to them. I'm not gonna tell you in a sense that you can't do something if it's allowed in our, uh, planning department and our ordinances, and this so far, except for this well lot size, is the only thing that they're asking a variance for, ma'am.
Okay. Any further discussion?
No.
May I say one more thing?
One more thing.
All, all of the, uh, development that's taking place out there is overstressing the road which accesses the whole place, and it will only get worse because there are an additional thousand acres for sale out there. So, I don't know at what point you say, yes, this ticks all the boxes, but we can't get you in there safely because our little two-lane road with no shoulders is inadequate to meet that purpose.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
So ma'am, I, I sympathize with you, because I don't like development neither, unfortunately, you know, I, I can't stop it on a personal basis, just, I grew up in that area, been there all my life, and we know that there's water problems, and when I was on the Planning Commission earlier this month, one of the, uh, I believe I asked the developer, I said, "Where are you gonna get your water?" That's the first thing I asked, and I believe he said, "It's, it's a five-hundred-foot well out of, out of the Madison." Does that sound right? Because if they didn't, if, if they wouldn't have said that they had a reliable water source, I probably would have some heartburn, just like you.
Yeah. Well, the traditional water source, there's the Pine Grove, um, Water District, is tapped out, so to speak, so he had to, he had to dig a new well, and from what I understand, it, it took some doing, yes, ma'am.
But it's my understanding that this well will provide adequate water to these ten lots, and that's why I, otherwise, I don't want to see the neighbors suffer because, you know, eleven or ten new lots, but it's my understanding that there is enough water supply for these ten lots.
Mr. Foreman, do you want to address that?
I can speak to that. Uh, yes, the, the well was drilled earlier this spring, and, um, it air tested at fifty gallons per minute. Um, aquifer starts about five-hundred-and-fifty feet depth, um, and of course it goes deeper. Um, but, so, yeah, right now it tests at that fifty gallons per minute.
Is that the Madison or Menelusa?
That was the Madison.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. I have another gentleman here, I don't have...
Can I just say one second?
Speaker requests for him, but...
Can, can we make specification that a house will not be built on that well lot?
Uh, that's what Commissioner Roskin just said.
Absolutely.
Um, yes.
I'd like to thank the Commissioners, allowing me to do this impromptu, I'm Chip Roberts, I have, uh, property just south of this area, and, uh, just two things I'd like to say is, number one, is to make sure we get the legal beagles to make it absolutely ironclad that this is just for this only, this little area only, and no houses, et cetera. You know, you know, if you don't make it, the legal beagles get involved, you know, some developer could drive a truck through there. Anyway, second thing I'd like to recommend is what caused a lot of this was the article in the Rapid City Journal, and I would like to recommend that staff, when they put in these variances, to be a little more specific, 'cause the way it read and the way I interpreted it last Friday was, hey, this guy can take that ninety-two acres and put in quarter-acre lots, that's what, that, 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 that's ninety-two homes, or no, nine-hundred-and-twenty homes they could put, and it, it just blew up the neighborhood, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
But I think we managed to calm people down, and I do, um, uh, give my kudos to the staff that once I went down there and talked to someone face-to-face like I'm doing to you now, they calmed me down, and a lot of people, they says, "No, this is what it's for."
Yes, sir.
But it would've been nice to, in the paper, just, just have a little sentencing, this is only for one particular...
Mr. Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Roskin.
Thank you very much.
You know, the ideal situation would've been the gentleman that sold this lot in two thousand twenty-one, if he would've put a covenant on there saying, "You cannot divide this hundred-and-two acres in anything smaller than four lots," we wouldn't even be having this, this discussion today, so covenants is work, and, and we need more of them, especially in this area, because when I did my research, there's a lot of big tracts around there, and I, you know, we just don't know what's gonna happen in the future, but if people don't want them subdivided, they need to put, uh, uh, effective covenants is in place to protect that.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Dana.
I would just like to add a clarification, um, based on, I, I assume the motion that you're gonna make soon, um, if, if you want to add some conditions, um, if you can make it specific to a residence, um, just because we'll have to have a structure there for chlorine dosing, dosing treatment to the water, it would be a structure of about twelve-by-twelve, roughly a tool shed.
I think we're talking like a residential structure, I mean, we talked about for, a lo, location for a well and the service of well, and of course, you're gonna need, uh, something to protect the, from vandalism, people getting in there, so I understand that.
So is there a motion on the floor, sir?
No, we don't.
Okay, Chairman, so with that in mind, um, is to approve this with the condition that, uh, no residential, um, no residential building is built on the property.
As a condition.
As a condition.
Is there a second?
Second.
I've got a motion and a, and a second for the discussion.
Okay.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you for your comments today.
Item H.
Item H is subdivision regulations variance twenty-one dash twenty-three to waive the requirement to submit percolation tests and soil profile hole information for the subject property. Again, landowner is Casey Skyberg, operating under Sudbury Ranch Landing, Land Holding LLC. His agent is Dana Foreman. This is the same property we had just talked about, uh, staff uses a two-prong approach when basing their recommendations. Prong one determines whether granting the variance runs counter to public interest. Uh, first criteria underneath that prong is, does it injure the neighborhood? Uh, staff found the proposed neighborhood will be a large lot residential, so it does not injure the neighborhood. Does it conform to the neighborhood? Um, yes, again, staff, uh, the proposed neighborhood will be a large lot residential. Number three, does it conform to the general purpose of the subdivision regulations? Staff found no percolation test in eight... Staff found no percolation tests and 8-foot deep soil profile hole information are required for any lot or subdivision that will utilize onsite wastewater treatment systems. Number five, does it harm public safety, health, or general welfare? Staff found no soil profile and percolation test information will be submitted as part of a building permit application. Prong two determines whether special conditions exist to grant a variance. Staff found that there are none that would warrant granting this variance request, however, any future plans to develop the proposed lots would require soil profile and percolation test information to be submitted as part of the building permit process. As the property sits today, there are two separate lots on the screen, you'll see existing on the left, proposed on the right. All those proposed lots, there'll be nine lots between 10 and 11 acres and a well lot, previously discussed, previous agenda item. Staff did route this interdepartmental review, there were no objections or concerns received, however, we did receive multiple emails from concerned citizens in the neighborhood. Staff's analysis of the request is that on July 6th of this year, the Board of Commissioners approved layout plan 21-41 with conditions. Approval of this request will satisfy condition number 19. Preliminary plat will be heard as agenda item P at this meeting for this area, and with that, staff recommends denial, as there are no special conditions that would exist granting this variance request. However, if the Board of Adjustment disagrees and approves the request, staff recommends the following condition to be included, that this variance to waive percolation tests and soil profile hole information is only for proposed lots 2R and lots 3 through lot 11 of Sudbury Ranch subdivision, and not for any further development or subdivision.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner LaSser.
I have a question, Jason. How is this different than any time we have someone ask for variance for percolation tests? You know, obviously, we wait until they do a building permit, and then we get them to do percolation tests. How is this different? That's, maybe that's where I'm a little lost on it.
No different at all.
Okay.
Okay, so Chairman.
Commissioner Haidkar.
Okay, so, we just said no residents on the lot, so percolation, I don't know if you really need one anyway, but it does say, I guess my motion is, that this variance to waive the percolation and soil profile hole information is only for proposed lots 2R and lots. What is lot 3 and 11 of Sudbury Ranch subdivision, and not for any further development or subdivision?
Mr. Chair.
That'd be my motion.
I've got a motion, is there a second? Is there a second to the motion? Is there a second?
Is there a second for discussion?
I've got a second. Commissioner LaCroy.
I was just trying to clarify, because this is for every one of these lots?
That's correct, so he's asking.
And just concerning the well lot?
Correct, yep. He's asking to do this because he doesn't know where future buyers are gonna put their homes, and if we were to go out there and dig profile holes and percolation tests, we don't know where they're gonna put their septic system yet.
Okay. Just had me confused when you said well lot, but it's for all.
Mr. Chair.
I'm okay with a second.
Commissioner Roskin.
You got any idea the rough cost to do a profile in three perk?
I do not.
You know, my concern is that Rockerville area has got some really strange geology, and we got some major problems in that area, and I would have a comfort level, knowing that each one of those lots has a suitable place for septic, even though they're very large, and we don't know where the house is gonna go. Personally, I would like to know that there is a spot on those 11, or those 10 lots, that you could put a septic system, that's just.
So Chairman.
Commissioner Haidkar.
If you did that, you'd be doing that to most everybody that built around that area, and we haven't done that to anybody else. But, bottom line is, if they build on that property, they're gonna have to have a percolation test to get their building permit. So, so the residents know, if you build on that property, if someone comes and buys a building permit from this man, they have to have a percolation test. Does that make sense? So we're not waiving that they never have a percolation test? It's just kinda like you when you built your house, you don't know where you're building your house. So, if you did a percolation test, you have to figure out where that's gotta go, after you know where your house is. So we're not waiving the percolation test, right, Jason? We're just waiting till they get their building permit.
Correct.
Okay, so y'all understand, we're not, we're not making him not do a percolation test, if we make this motion. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
The only point I'm making is that if they're, if they're sold, and the buyer is not informed of that, they could run into some consequences after a complete sale, like we're running into mountain metal, so I'm just trying to look at both sides, sir.
I know you don't want to hear from me again, but.
You're good.
We did have soil surveys obtained from this area, and 55% of this land is not suitable for conventional septic systems, so, and a couple of these lots, there's very little area that would be suitable for that. So these would be above-ground mound-type systems, which are both costly and difficult to maintain, just point of interest.
But they can still do the percolation test, and then still build some type of septic if we can't do, if they can do mound or other, there's more expensive ones than that, but I don't think the buyer beware, I think when they buy that, they're gonna figure it out in a way that, if you buy land, I don't know if we've ever tried to buy land, and you didn't do a percolation test, or you didn't have somebody come out to see if there's water, and they can put a sewer in, then you shouldn't be buying a lot. Does that make sense? So, just, just so you know, most people, if they're gonna buy a lot, that's the first thing they'll ask.
Okay, I have a gentleman right here, wishes to speak on this.
Thank you, and actually, Ken Brun's, I do live out in the same vicinity there, but I'd like to address what Deb just reiterated right here. In the previous, that's been brought up, when we were looking at trying to subdivide that 10-acre lot out there, like you said, you never know where they're building. So to do that percolation test, and we went through this six, eight years ago, and it's the same thing now as what it was then, it's buyer beware for one thing, and secondly, when you have to put that in, there's other options that you can do, it doesn't have to be just the one system itself.
Yes, sir.
Correct.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second for the discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I think there's another gentleman.
Okay.
Again, just, buyer beware, six of those nine, six of those lots have already been sold on a contingency basis.
Yes, sir.
So you've got people that have bought out there already, that, this is off of the Coldwell Banker real estate website.
Hopefully, we helped them today, too.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
And you folks have helped them. Okay, thank you.
Further discussion.
By the way, the average price is $40,000 an acre, an acre.
Good profit. Yep. What's the motion, Mr. Chair? The motion is, is to approve, I got motion by Commissioner Haidkar, second by Commissioner LaCroy. Further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I've got four to one, Commissioner Roskin acting, voting no. I need a motion now to come out of the Board of Adjustment.
So moved.
What excitement there. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Before we go into consent, I have one thing. Okay, so, we have 10 things on our agenda, besides this consent, and they are, there's more than 10, but 10 have been approved, or nine have been approved and one continuance, right? So if we can maybe do that consent a little bit different, that anything that's been approved or continued to be put on the consent, and then we can pull that off the consent if we decide as a commission that we don't want to approve it, or we have more discussion, because that's a lot of stuff to go through each time. We're going through each one of these when, like when we're city, or, am I correct, Lloyd? If you, if something was approved at planning commission, or it was continued to the next meeting, this is crazy, to go through all of this, one by one, and they do it at the city, so, and they've done it, this is, what are you gonna tell me, Megan?
Megan Krieger with the State's Attorney's Office, I believe that there is a statutory requirement, I can double-check and look into that, to see the difference between the consent agenda and the items that are not put on the consent agenda. My recollection is that there is a reason why we're doing it that way, but I need to look, because I just can't remember off the top of my head.
Well, Megan, the bottom line is, is they're all gonna be on agenda, they all can be pulled off an agenda, but if they are not pulled off, because we don't have any public comment on them, we don't have any commissioner, if they do have an issue with it, once it's been approved or continued, they can still pull it off a consent agenda. Why are we going through every one and reading every one, when it's the same thing as if it was on a consent agenda, left so and pulls it off? There's no discussion on these, except the same thing, except we're going one by one by one, and then, I don't know, I don't know if the public wants to sit through 10 things when they could sit through two.
No, and I understand your point of view, but I do think there are some statutory requirements, I just can't remember what they are off the top of my head.
If we could.
I can write you guys a memo.
If we could look that up, Board, I think that would be kind of better.
Mr. Chair. They're gonna do that.
I'm not the chair.
I'll write a memo.
I was actually gonna bring up.
Thank you.
Under items from commissioners, that we request the planning department and them to look into that.
Thank you, Lloyd.
But I'll bring it up.
Sorry, I just like.
Item I.
Sorry.
Item I, minor plat 21-58 to reconfigure lot lines to create lots 2A-1 and 2B-1 of Battle Creek Mountain Estates subdivision. The applicant, applicants are Gerald and Michelle Muller, their agent is all aspect surveying. Location of the subject properties is 13704 Highway 40. Currently zoned rural residential district, one lot, there's no special flood hazard area on the subject property. This board did approve layout plan 21-45 on August 3rd of this year with conditions. As the property sits today, I have current on the left-hand side of your screen and proposed on the right. Starting on the left, lot 2A is 3.02 acres, contains a single-family residence and onsite wastewater treatment system, as well as a conditional use permit to use that residence as a vacation home rental. Lot 2B is 6.52 acres and vacant. Proposed lots, again on the right-hand side of your screen, lot 2A-1 will become 6.031 acres, contain the single-family residence, onsite wastewater treatment system, and conditional use permit. Lot 2B1 will be 3.501 acres and vacant of any structures and utilities. Request was now for interdepartmental review. Environmental planner did have comments, but I would like to make a correction there, those do not apply to this request. Department of Equalization also had a comment stating that when the survey is submitted, it needs to have cord bendings for the curves, and this is included as a condition of approval. Staff's analysis of the request is that on September 7th of this year, the Board of Adjustment approved subdivision regulations variance 21-20 in order to waive the requirements to dedicate and improve undeveloped section line right-of-way, and this satisfied condition number five of layout plan 21-45. As of this report, the applicant has not provided percolation tests and soil profile hole information for a proposed lot 2B-1, or obtained an improved subdivision regulations variance to waive this request, and that is included as a condition of approval as well. With that, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's requests, as it appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area, and recommends approval of minor plat 21-58 with conditions.
We'll move.
And this is consent.
We got a first and a second?
This is consent agenda, correct?
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure.
Okay. So, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
We do. Lloyd was first, and I was second.
Okay. Vote?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed, for the zero.
Cody Stack, environmental planner. Item J is layout plan LPL 21-55, it is to create lot 1 of Eckert subdivision. The applicant and landowners Roger and Kathy Eckert, the agent is fist land surveying, Janelle's in the audience, if there's any questions. Location of the property is approximately .046 miles east of the intersection of Neckyoke Road and Hidden Valley Trail. Currently as the property sits, it is 80.05 acres, and is vacant of any structures.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve.
One comment before that, staff would recommend striking condition two and condition six, as they do not apply to the actual.
The striking condition two and six.
I didn't hear that, Cody.
Striking two and six.
Striking condition two and six, as they do not apply to this request, it was very different.
And second, or concurs?
There'll be five conditions then.
Correct.
Yes, sir. Ma'am.
Is anyone here relative to this matter? Would you like to speak on it, or answer questions, or?
From item J.
There's been a.
I'm neighbor with this proposed situation.
With the, with the.
Come on up.
Do you have an agenda?
No, I don't have.
Item 2 and 1. Six. So this is about Roger and Kathy Eckert?
Right. That's what I understand.
Yes, identify yourself and.
I'm Mary Boyer, I live off Neckyoke Road, 13584, and got the official notification that this was gonna happen. I need more information about what is gonna happen on this piece, and where, and I don't have it. I made an attempt to contact Mr. Eckert, he did not return my call.
Okay.
So, I'm here to find out what the proposal is, and.
Okay. So did you, did you hear what Cody's explanation?
Not really.
Okay.
So they're looking at, this is an 80-acre parcel, they're looking at subdividing three acres off of that parcel, to create lot 1, this lot right here.
Tell me where that is.
So if you.
Relationship to.
It'd be, the lot would be in this area on this map.
Okay. And there's no well, there's no septic, there's no, nothing at this point.
Correct. The planning department, at this point, doesn't, we, the state deals with wells for septic, it'll be done at a building permit, they are required to do perk and profile hole, or get a variance to that, but it'll be handled at the building permit process.
But it has not been plotted for additional.
No, they are just proposing the one lot at this, at this point in time.
That clarifies the thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And ma'am, I think, the truth of information is, maybe, if, when you see something like this, you can always come up during the week, the planning department, and ask them questions, instead of sitting through three hours of a meeting.
That certainly would be preferable.
Second that.
Is there anyone else here relative to this? I have a motion and a second to approve. Further discussion?
No.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item K.
Item K is rezone RZ 21-25, it is to rezone 3.28 acres to agr, from agriculture district to rural residential district. The applicant is Roger and Kathy Eckert, the agent is fist land surveying, Janelle's in the audience, if there are any questions. When approving rezones, we look at criteria, the first criteria is zoning within one-half mile. Currently, there is rural residential districts, suburban residential district, agriculture district, open space and highway service district. Criteria two, we look at future land use within one-half mile. Currently, there is suburban residential district, rural residential district, ranchette district, agriculture district, open space, planning and development, and highway service district. This was Roger on for interdepartmental review, there were no comments or concerns received. Current zoning and future land use identifies the subject property in several parcels, is rural residential district within one-half mile, so the applicant's request to rezone appears to be in harmony with the current zoning in the area, so staff is recommending approval of RZ 21-25.
So move.
Second.
Who moved it? Commissioner LaSser moved to approve, second by Commissioner Haidkar. Further discussion? Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Hearing none? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item L is layout plan LPL 21-53, it is to create lots 1 and 2 of Storm Hills subdivision,[1794.83] It is to create lots 1 and 2 of Storm Hills subdivision number 2. The applicant is, uh, Detlev and Connie Proch. Uh, the agent is First Land Surveying. Janelle's in the audience if there's any questions. Location of the property is 2.3984 Palmer Gulch Road, and the current property size is, uh, 12.22 acres, and it is currently residential use. Uh, currently on the property, there's a single-family residence, a tool shed, and a detached garage, and there is, they are current on their onsite wastewater treatment system. For proposed lots, Lot 1 will be 9.77 acres and will contain all the structures listed above, and Lot 2 will be 2.35 acres and is currently vacant of any structure. This was Roger on for department review. Uh, County Highway, um, came back and said that Palmer Gulch needs to be improved to ordinance 14 standards, beginning at the intersection just north of the railroad tracks in the section line, and a turnaround needs to be built in accordance with Table 1, pending to County subdivision regulation ordinance. Uh, at the, at a previous request today, County Highway changed their stance on ordinance 14, and they can build it to the 16-foot. Uh, percolation test and soil profile home information will be required. Uh, a rezone or lot size variance, they obtained the lot size variance. Staff finds, uh, no significant issues with applicant's request, as it appears to be in harmony with existing lots in the area. So staff is recommending approval, however, staff is going to add some conditions. The first condition is that prior to filing the plat and registered deeds, improvements to be made to Palmer Gulch Road and the turnaround constructed or surety for those be posted. And, uh, number 13, staff did a site visit, and there is a shed within the right-of-way of Palmer Gulch Road, so prior to the plat being filed that registered deeds, the existing shed needs to be removed from the right-of-way.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Roskinak.
So Cody, how many conditions are we looking at right now?
Uh, there would be 13 at that point.
13? So my.
This is adding just two?
Adding two and will change Condition 9, um, where it says that it's be built to ordinance 14 standards, uh, will change that to, that the applicant proves Palmer Gulch Road, um, to the standards required by the Highway Department.
Okay. Sorry, Ron.
So my motion would be to approve with the, uh, with the 13 conditions, uh, as you just spelled out.
Is there a second?
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Further discussion? Anybody here wishing to address this? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried. Item M.
Item N is Layout Plat or Plan LPL 21-54. It is to consolidate two lots to create Lot 13R of Emberg subdivision. The applicant is Natalie Weaton, uh, Weaton Enterprises LLC. She is also the landowner. The location of the property is at 13029 Old Hill City Road, and the size of the properties are approximately 1.62 acres. Uh, currently, the use is residential. Currently on the properties, so on Lot 13, the lot to the west, uh, there is a single-family residence that was built in 1961, and a 500-square-foot attached deck that has a proper building permit. Uh, they are current on their operating permit, and they, uh, did a new sys, they put in a new system. Uh, they have a variance to reduce the front yard setback for the deck. Lot 14 is vacant of any structures. The proposed lot will be 1.72 acres and will contain the structures and the septic permit. This was Roger on for interdepartmental review. County Highway, uh, replied that a approach permit will be needed. A rezone or lot size variance will be required for Lot 13R. Uh, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request, as it appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area. Uh, staff would also like to add that the Keystone City Councilor is, uh, looking at, um, annexing this property in. I, they were, that was at the meeting on Wednesday. I haven't heard from the applicant if that was approved or not. Uh, but staff is recommending approval of Layout Plan LPL 54 with conditions.
Move approval.
So I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. So Cody, this is within the three-mile limit of Keystone, is it?
It's not within the, uh, limits of Keystone, but the, the applicant is combining these lots to meet the, um, requirement for the one acre for a vacation home rental. Um, the city of Keystone doesn't have that requirement, so they're actually looking at being annexed into the city of Keystone. So the city of Keystone's looking at annexing all the properties in the city limits.
Okay. Further discussion? Anybody else here relative to this item? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried. Item N.
Item N is Preliminary Plat PPL 21-57. It is to subdivide to create lots D1, D2, D3 of Johnson Estates subdivision. The applicant is Randall Peregrin. The landowner is Robert and Donna Peregrin, and the surveyors, Howland Surveying. The location of the property is approximately 0.2 miles east of the intersection of West Highway 44 and Thunderhead Falls Road, and involves 8.25 acres. Uh, currently, as the property sits, it is vacant of any structures, and there is no onsite wastewater treatment system. This was, or, proposed lots, Lot D1 will be 4.19 acres, Lot D2 will be 2.02 acres, and Lot D3 will be 2.051 acres. So as Roger on for interdepartmental review, no major comments or concerns were received. Uh, the Board of Commissioners approved Layout Plan LPL 21-42 at the July 20th, 2021, um, Board of Commissioners meeting. The plat has the wrong certificate, uh, for preliminary plat and final plat. The county auditor needs to be changed. Uh, this will be, need, need to be corrected prior to filing the final plat, and the proposed plat does not have a scale. Uh, the applicant and the surveyor are aware of this, um, so staff is recommending approval, approval of preliminary plat PPL 21-57 with conditions.
Move to approve.
With nine conditions? He just said 10, but it says nine here.
Oh, I just, I said with conditions.
Sorry, just with conditions. Move to approve with nine conditions?
Correct. Okay, who made the motion?
Ron.
Ron. I second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Roskinak, second by Commissioner Adcock. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried. Item O.
Afternoon, Commissioners. Jason Thompson. I'm sorry.
I don't know why I said that. It's like, oh. Because where.
Agenda item O is Layout Plan 21-59 to reconfigure lot lines to create Lot 2R less Lot H2 and H3 of HES number 563 and Lot 1 of JV subdivision. The applicant is Isaac Almonza. He is operating under JV Gulch LLC. The other affected landowner is Karen Murphy. Location of the property is 23790 Highway 385. They're both currently zoned agriculture district. They're both used for residential purposes. Access is off Highway 385, and there is floodway on the subject properties. Uh, the first lot we're talking about is on the left-hand side of your screen, the far-left property. Uh, that is Lot 2, Lot, less Lot H2 and H3. It is 7.4 acres, contains a single-family residence, a detached garage, a shed, and a garage addition, as well as an onsite wastewater treatment system. Uh, that operating permit for the onsite wastewater treatment system is expired, and that is included as a condition of approval to get that addressed. Uh, the other larger property is 52.99 acres, contains a single-family residence, as well as an onsite wastewater treatment system. Proposed lots are on the right-hand side of the screen. Lot 2R less Lot H2 and H3 will become 5.65 acres, containing the single-family residence, detached garage, shed, and garage addition. Uh, Lot 1 of JV subdivision will become 54.74 acres, contain the single-family residence and onsite wastewater treatment system. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review. No objections or concerns were received. With that, staff, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request, as it appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area, and staff recommends approval with conditions.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner LaCroy, second by Commissioner Roskinak. Further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried. Item P.
Agenda item P is Preliminary Plat 21-56 to subdivide and create lots 2R and lots 3 through 11 of Sudbury Ranch subdivision. Landowner is Casey Skyberg, operating under Sudbury Ranch Land Holding LLC. His agent is Dana Foreman of KLJ. Location of the property is east of the intersection of Clydesdale Road and Sudbury Ranch Road. Access will be off Sudbury Ranch Road. There's no special flood hazard area on the property, and it is currently zoned agriculture district and vacant of any structures or utilities. Uh, there are two properties that we're talking about here on the left-hand side of your screen. The smaller one on the left, uh, sorry, is 10.01 acres. A larger one on the right is 92 acres. And I lost my place. Proposed lots are on the right-hand side of your screen. Lot 2R will become 11.082 acres. Lot 3 will be the well lot at 2.5 acres. Lot 4 will be 11.11166 acres. Uh, Lot 5 will be 11.373 acres. Lot 6 will be 10.472 acres. Lot 7, 10.498 acres. Lot 8, 10.662 acres. Lot 9, 10.097 acres. Lot 10 will be 10.712 acres, and Lot 11 will be 11.158 acres. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review. Emergency Services, uh, in reviewing the plat, did note that the road name was incorrect and was previously approved, so that is included as a condition of approval, and will be heard as the next agenda item. County Highway also had, uh, comments about the engineered road design, uh, drawings that were submitted. They do not meet ordinance 14 requirements, uh, and this is included as a condition of approval. County Fire also had comments and concerns about the fire mitigation plan. The applicant's agent is gonna have to work with County Fire to come up with a resolution to that, uh, prior to the final plat's dismissal, and that is included as a condition of approval as well. Register of deeds had a comment, had two comments stating that the plat heading needs to get in, contain formerly language that gives legal descriptions that the new lots are coming out of, and also that there were two, uh, register of deed certificates, and they only need one. That is also included as a condition of approval. Staff's analysis of the request is that the applicant applied for subdivision regulations variance to waive dismissal of percolation and profile hole information, and that was heard at today's meeting and approved. Uh, the applicant also applied for a variance to zoning in order to create, to have a lot less than 10 acres in an agriculture district, which was also approved at this meeting. On August 15th, the applicant applied for road construction within a section line right-of-way, which will be heard at this meeting as agenda item S. Emergency Services did approve Sky Ridge Court as a road name, uh, for the proposed right-of-way, and that will be heard as the next item on this agenda. Uh, as of this staff report, the applicant's agent is working to provide information to County Highway, County Fire, uh, regarding their comments. And the applicant, applicant's request appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area, and staff recommends approval, uh, with conditions. I would like to note, though, conditions number five and number six, uh, should be amended, uh, to read that prior to, or, that at the time of final plat's dismissal, surety must be posted for the construction of roads within the subdivision, or obtain a subdivision regulations variance waiving the surety requirement. Uh, number six should also be rewritten that, at the time of final plat's dismissal, surety must be posted for installation in utilities, including but not limited to water system distribution lines, water system collection lines, electrical service, lift stations, hydrants, et cetera.
So.
Do I, do I have a motion to, uh, include the, uh, amendments of the two conditions?
I move to approve with nine condi, conditions with five and six, uh, those conditions being amended for soon to the, today's meeting.
Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried. Road naming.
Gen, gen item Q is proposed road naming of Sky Ridge Court. The Pennington County Planning Department received a road naming application to rename, or to name a future platted 66-foot right-of-way Sky Ridge Court. Staff found this to be an appropriate name for this right-of-way. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review. Emergency Services does approve, uh, Sky Ridge Court as the name. Up to five future properties will take access off of this right-of-way. This request will clearly identify the future properties and should alleviate confusion in an emergency response event. With that, staff recommends approval of the road name Sky Ridge Court for, or with the following condition, that the applicant will be responsible for payment and posting road name sign in accordance with the standards set forth by Pennington County Highway.
Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried. Item R.
Item R is a request to waive ordinance 14 standards. The applicant, Casey Skyberg, will not be requesting to waive requirements and will be submitting engineered road construction plans. The road will be constructed to ordinance number 14 standards. When this was originally submitted, uh, we did look at the, uh, engineered road plans, and they did not meet ordinance 14 standards, so we were under the impression that they were going to waive a portion of that, those standards. Uh, that was not the case. They are going to be constructing to ordinance 14 standards.
Item R. Oh, no. I'm sorry. Yes.
Agenda item S is road construction within section line right-of-way, uh, 21-09, to construct a road within a section line right-of-way between sections 21 and 28, to provide access to property located in section 21. The applicant is Casey Skyberg, uh, operating under Sudbury Ranch Land Holding LLC. Property location is off of Neck Yoke Road and the end of Clydesdale Road and Sudbury Ranch Road. Total project size is 102 acres. Uh, it is zoned agriculture district, vacant of any structures and utilities at this time. There's no special flood hazard area on the property. Uh, proposed road will be, uh, 2,500 feet of Clydesdale Road, or at the end of Clydesdale Road. Uh, you can see here on the map. It will be a 66-foot wide right-of-way approximately 20 feet, 2,500 feet long, 24-foot wide road surface, three-foot ditches, 12-inch gravel surfacing to meet part B granular base and surfacing, 18-inch culverts, as well as a 55-foot radius cul-de-sac. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review, and again, County Highway did have issue with the submitted engineered road construction plans, and the applicant's agent is working with County Highway to resolve those. July 6th of this year, the Board of Commissioners approved Layout Plan 21-41 with conditions, and approval of this request will satisfy condition number 17 and allow the planning process to continue. Uh, September 13th of this year, the applicant's agent Dana Foreman did email staff to address County Highway's concerns, and stated the, uh, proposed road will meet ordinance 14 standards, and copies of this email are attached to your report. Uh, with that, staff recommends approval of road construction within a section line right-of-way, CS 21-05, with conditions.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried. Item T.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Brittany Malater, Planning Director. Item T is Rezone RZ 21-26 to rezone 6.68 acres from suburban residential district to urban residential district, and the Planning Commission did recommend to continue this rezone to the October 5th, 2021 Board of Commissioners.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to continue to the October 5th meeting. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried. U.
Item U is Public Hearing of Ordinance Amendment OA 21-12 for Pennington County to amend Section 210 Urban Residential District to amend and supersede the existing Section 210 for Urban Residential District of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this ordinance amendment. Uh, the reason for this ordinance amendment was to update this section to allow for higher density development of single, single-family dwellings in the urban residential zoning districts. Um, when we originally, um, redid the Section 200 under urban residential districts, we did allow use by rights for multiple-family dwellings. However, uh, there is a provision under the suburban residential district that allows for density bonuses with a variance. So instead of going through the variance process for the density bonus, they can rezone to this urban residential district. The biggest changes is allowing six thousand square foot lots in lieu of sixty-five hundred square foot lots. And allowing a twenty-foot front yard setback in lieu of a twenty-five foot front yard setback. So those are the biggest changes. But it would allow for a higher density, single-family residences in this district. So staff is recommending approval along with planning commission.
So move.
Thank you.
Got a motion and a second to approve for the discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Items from the chair, commission members. Next Tuesday, we were scheduled to go out and look at this property by Hill City. And one of the parties cannot make that date. And so we're looking at moving that to October twelfth. Is that an open date for commission members at like eleven o'clock in the morning?
You said it was a Tuesday, sir?
Yes, October twelfth is.
That's the second after, after a commission meeting on the fifth.
Right.
Following week.
Right.
I have a meeting at noon that I have, I have to chair that meeting because the chair is gone.
Okay, so if we moved it to afternoon, what time could you be there?
On, on the twelfth, my meeting is from twel- from noon to two.
Okay.
Can we do it on Thursday or Friday of that week? Anybody have a Thursday or Friday that's in conflict?
Neither one of, the fifteenth is not a conflict for me.
Ollie, do we have any commissioner conflicts during that time?
Fourteenth, Ron, on the afternoon, Ron and I have an MPO meeting. Let's see.
What Friday?
October fifteenth is open for committee meetings right now.
October what, fourteenth?
Fifteenth.
Fifteen?
Friday the fifteenth.
I kind of prefer that than I'm off for the rest of the day.
Fifteenth at what time? Six in the morning, Lloyd?
Yeah.
Get up at five, get there by six, have a campfire. Just kidding.
Nine o'clock work that morning for?
Assuming it doesn't snow, yeah.
Nine o'clock. What difference does that make?
No, you're getting up at six, not at five now. Just because you have two children.
Remember, I'm the furthest away.
So we're looking at the fifteenth at nine o'clock, right?
Fifteenth or eighteenth?
You're going to send out a calendar for that?
This is fifteenth.
Okay.
We good on that?
Go move.
Thank you.
I don't know if we need a motion or not. I think we just need to.
Fifteenth at nine o'clock.
We were covering all bases.
I'm not accepting the motion. Just show up.
Fifteenth is what?
Nine o'clock in the morning.
Nine.
That's what I thought.
Bring him, bring him a couple bucks.
Yeah. On the thirteenth, I have planning commission mark. Is there something going on on the thirteenth? You have a special meeting on? Or maybe I just got a hard rock or something? Who else had it? You got it down too?
You have something on the thirteenth, Ollie? Oh, well, this is on the fifteenth, but.
Not in October.
Okay. Well, I'll erase it. Okay. Just don't show up. Okay, other items from the, from the, from the commission.
This is just a, not committee, just commission, right?
Yep.
So September the ninth, Gary and I met with Brian Rupert, Pat Widerold, and Eric Lynn. Those are the gentlemen that did the presentation today. And they did their initial discussion on their, on Wanton County that participated in the Hill City Trails. This development trail from Hill City to Sheridan Lake. That same day, Gary and I performed a site inspection on the Beasley property relative to his zero setback request from the edge of the section line. Appeared that he would not need a setback request. As we estimated, there was a seven thousand square foot usable building envelope. On the eleventh, attended the Lincoln Day Dinner. On the sixteenth, observed the first two concrete arches being set on South Rochwood Bridge with Joe and Sean. And thanks for the use of table gate.
That's it. Yeah. Lloyd, anything?
Yes. My, my, what I was going to bring up, this is the time I was going to have staff and on the next meeting agenda, have discussion on the equalization agenda. Just give them time to research it, discuss it in the next two weeks. I'm thinking, I apologize to most people I talked to because I've been whining about it, about everybody I talked to, about how long it's getting to be. And I think we could have executive, if, you know, we, the need to have the reading, maybe we can do an executive report instead of sitting here listening, read through the whole report that we've had in front of us for the agenda.
In planning, not equalization.
For the planning, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So I'm just bringing this up to, to, for people to think about and discuss. And next meeting, maybe we could talk about it. I don't know. I'm sure Megan's got some concerns and, and Holly and some people about how it's going to run, what needs to be done, but.
Well, when we have a, when we had approved stuff, remember Lloyd? If it was approved, then it was on consent. And if it wasn't approved and it was denied or whatever, then they brought it up.
And we can.
As commissioners, we can pull it off. Like if there's fifteen consent agenda, I, or agenda items, and then there's somebody that wants to speak on that. Or if we missed them, they can always come back and we've always went back and said, okay. But this is crazy.
I just, I just wanted to bring that up and prime examples today. Our consent agenda, they still read through the whole thing, read through the whole thing. And then we approved it, so it really wasn't consent because we just reread and through everything. But I just wanted to bring that up for the next meeting so everybody was, so I'm whining to the right people.
Wow.
You know what I'm saying?
Holly gave you the look.
And, yeah, I know. I just wanted to bring that up because maybe Brittany and her team could, could sit down and discuss how they could maybe want to do better.
And I didn't mean they were doing anything bad either. I just meant that maybe we could simplify this for the audience and for us.
Exactly.
Because the audience can pull it off and then they don't have to sit through twelve things to get to number six. They can pull off number six. And it was just, it made it a lot better.
See, now we, we drew.
Go away, Megan.
Here she comes. She's going to tell us.
Stop me before Megan.
I'm sorry.
I was trying to get by for two weeks because it's been a long day already.
I'm sorry. So I think that the changes came out of that Abada case. That's my recollection, the, where the county was sued by some landowners on the mining ordinance. I'm fairly certain that's where the policy changes came from. And I believe that was Michelle that had recommended that that be changed so that way we can give that meaningful hearing on each individual one. Because it came up where it was on the consent agenda and then it got continued. And then it wasn't notified because it got continued and then it all got missed and then we lost it.
I'm, I'm saying we, we're, we're brilliant around here. We could sit down and work things out and maybe come up with something.
Second.
No, and I'm not, I'm not saying that this, the way that we're doing it is necessarily the best way. But I can tell you the why it changed is because we were sued.
But when we did it in the city, same thing. You put it on consent, everybody has that chance. If you have someone in the audience or maybe they missed, Jason comes up and like, oh, I didn't know I was supposed to pull that off on number six. I thought you guys were going to, that kind of thing. We've always went back and said, okay, let's reconsider number six. And we didn't have that very often. If it was a lot where people just couldn't get the rules or couldn't figure it out, it was different. But, um, yeah, that's, makes this agenda.
And we can look at it, but that's where we lost in court was that the court determined the consent calendar wasn't a meaningful hearing.
Right.
And that it didn't matter whether they had the opportunity to pull it off or not. It wasn't proper. So that's why a lot of that, Megan's absolutely right. That's why a lot of it got changed. But we'll go through and look at the ones that maybe we can change.
Mining ordinances?
There are some that we can't.
I remember our mining ordinances, absolutely. I mean, we could make the exception on those ones. They are always, I mean, you guys can just work through it. I didn't want to drag it out.
And I think the ordinances, the ordinances are a little bit different than, you know, people's property things meaning.
Right.
To me, when you're looking at something, because they don't understand any of it, in this case, people usually will look and they will have a complaint or they won't. And you will see it at planning commission before it even gets here. So then we never put it on consent if we had complaints. Does that make sense?
I was going to say, that was, that's probably a good thing there. If, if it got a complaint in, in planning, then it definitely shouldn't be on consent for us.
Even if it was approved.
Even if it was approved. The other thing is, is with the Abada case that you're talking about where we got sued. Now, was it a case of where it was originally on a consent calendar and then it just continued to the next one? Is that how it was? It wasn't that we had heard it and then the next one we can, we continued it?
Continue it.
So what happened in the Abada case is it was put on the consent agenda. It was noticed up in our local newspapers for that consent agenda date. And then it was continued from that date, but then not noticed up again. And that was where the Supreme Court had issue with how it was noticed because, because it was continued out. The public wasn't made aware of when they were going to be able to come in and speak.
It wasn't really the consent. See, I didn't remember it as a consent. I remember it as a continuance. Not the consent problem, but the continuance problem without notification. We, we didn't notice it right, that we were continuing instead of, yeah. So it wasn't really, to me, it wasn't the consent issue. It was the continuance and how it was.
Okay.
Gotcha.
I asked for the next meeting. Because I got one other item I'd like to add to the next meeting too. And that would be talk about possibility of reforming the compensation committee meeting. Just discussion at the next meeting, give people a chance to think about it and maybe do some research on it. That's all I'm asking.
I would ask Lloyd, if on the compensation, it wouldn't be compensation, it would be the wage study, Gallagher's study? Because that's the, that's the issue, if I'm correct?
Well.
Instead of making a whole compensation committee again?
Just discussion on the whole thing. They can bring back some information so we all know what it used to be, what it is, what it's going. I, I'm, I'm just kind of tired now, so I'm really there.
I just going to say it was a good time at the Lincoln Day Dinner with all of us there. So that's what I enjoyed that week because that was, we're talking about just what we did the prior two weeks, right? Yeah. Yeah. I enjoyed that time together. Thank you. Yeah.
So on September seventh, I did attend the legislative redistricting Rapid City Subcommittee Meeting. Pennington County's population has increased from a hundred and nine, a hundred thousand nine forty-eight in two thousand ten to a hundred nine thousand two twenty-two for twenty twenty. It's an increase of a little over just about eighty-three hundred, which will need to be taken into consideration as we did redistrict the county commission districts. And Lori Severson was also in attendance at that meeting. So that will be something that will need to be up for discussion here soon.
So what will they do if they redistrict and we district out of it? And we're already in there. You're already, when they redistrict?
Yeah.
Don't they change the boundaries?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so what if like Lloyd's boundary, he's like on the border of that boundary and he's not in that district anymore? They don't start that till what, to the year that you're going to?
Well.
Not elected?
That's calling, call it, called being redistrict out of your district.
Well, you know what I mean?
Happens in the legislative.
But you know what I'm saying? So Lloyd got three, four years. He's on the borderline. Now he has to run again because he's not in that district again after he won for four years? You see what I'm saying?
I, I suspect what we'll be looking at will probably not be taking anybody out of their district. But yeah, that.
But once it's done, then it's redistrict.
One of, one of the districts that's, I mean, is going to have to be taken into consideration is District Four, Lassiter's District. Because of the American, what do we call it? The American.
American mailbox.
American mailboxes.
Yeah.
So, because that, that lopsides his numbers when you, when you just look at it, so.
Well, half should be yours and half should be.
Some of this is going to have to be relooked at. You know, I had suggested that we really look at one of trying to divide some of that since all that workload has been in one of trying to divide that up. A little bit better. But, I mean, you got to tell you, I am not looking at the whole picture when I look at it. I mean, it looks perfectly simple to me that you draw the lines on the maps and you can make it work.
Right.
But you have to consider what the auditor goes through with the precinct areas and so forth too, and the voting and so.
I think prime example is some of Ron's districts and mine. Well, I mean, within blocks of my house, really.
Yeah, yeah. And probably mine too.
Yeah, yours.
Yeah. So, so there may have to be some, some sort of shift then. Also, well, I'll wait on the county commission until we get to actual meetings that we attended and that we're assigned to. Deb, start with you.
Go with me. Fire Service Board went to scenic, was awesome. They showed, showed me where the, they're putting the new fire station on top of the hill. They showed me how they repurposed a bunch of their vehicles. They were even given those vehicles. They've only bought one. Very resourceful ranchers, farmers, had the best food ever. Mr. Sutton, what's his name, Frank Bloom? He made us the biggest, awesomest hamburgers ever. And it was just, it was his meat. It was awesome. Anyway, best food ever. So they're, they were very thankful of this commission, you guys. It was amazing. They were just like, thank you guys, you know, farmers and ranchers. They know all that hard work is and what we just did for them as a commission. I'll just tell you, I've never been thanked as a, as for our commission that much. But like I said, the food was good. We talked about getting those contracts and, and doing some of that. They're talking about their training like they usually do, talking about a lot of fires. This last weekend, I don't know if you knew this, but they contact me a lot on those when they have the fires. They had tons of fires this last weekend. Those guys were busier than heck. So anything we've just done for them, they are very thankful. And I can tell you, like I said, these last couple of years have been fire crazy. So because of the dryness. So well worth it. Building Committee, I stayed for about an hour, had to go to another meeting. So Bron's going to give the update on that. And Pennington County Housing Redevelop, we are moving forward on many things in that area. Brian asked us if we'd like to go to, because we need training, if we'd like to go to a training maybe in January, the night through the twelfth for some of our commissioners. I thought that would be pretty awesome because all it teaches you is all about housing. Pennington County housing with rules, regs. And boy, do we need some of that because we got a bunch of new, new one of us and I can tell you I'm one of those. What else did we talk about? Our, Justin is leaving. I think I told you guys that he's getting a, a different job. He is our project manager. So that's pretty crazy. Let's see, we had an audit. The audit was amazing. We are way above and beyond any of the authorities just on how we've been doing, how we're doing our budgets, how we're just doing many things. That was based on Brian changing a bunch of stuff and making it, a lot of our stuff is more transparent anyway. But the lady from, I forgot her name. She was very nice from Casey Peterson was very efficient. She put us a program up that was a PowerPoint. And I said, maybe we could do that through our audit for some of the stuff we do so we have a bit better understanding. So we had a big book on the audit, but she, she put bottom line on it and had about four or five pages. So not that we don't understand the audit, you guys, in one sense, but just broke it down a little bit.
Executive summary?
Yes. Good job, Lloyd. So it was pretty awesome because we just understood it. And not that we have to, because we do a good job, but. So that was exciting for our commission to know how awesome we were doing. And then we did something pretty great, you guys. So when you have, remember our money was between twenty and sixty thousand for helping people and tried to get them into housing. And that was where our bottom line was, our baseline was. So we took a look at Hill City, well, if I'm correct, probably kept some of those the same. But we moved the percentile. Remember like you got for a two-bedroom, we only got seven something when the market's going at eight ninety-five or something. So what we did instead of go on eighty or ninety percentile, we went to a hundred and ten percent. Why we did that is we tried that this year so that way we could have people go into more quality, if we could apartments. Instead of putting in everybody in the low income range and saying, you know, this is what you get because that's all you can get. So we moved it up so that range would make, or would let people in that area from twenty to sixty, in the working class, you already know. They should have to go more into the low, low income housing to be able to get the housing because they can't fit that ratio. So it kind of bumped them up by probably, I don't know, ten, I don't know, some of those were ten to fifty thousand difference for a three-bedroom, four-bedroom. Remember those family units where people are putting people into two-bedroom apartment, two-bedroom places? So just that, I can't say enough about Brian, his staff, and what this team of commissioners are doing just to try to help what we're having that workforce housing in Rapid City and try to make that difference. So I'm pretty excited about that committee, so.
Very good. Ron?
Okay. September the ninth, the big five meeting. Gary and I went to that meeting. And I shared a letter that I'd got at the commission from that Joe. And, uh, I shared a letter that I'd got at the commission from that Joe Hedrick and discussed his goals of getting students involved more with the city and county governments. And was it Katie that I gave the letter to?
Right.
She was very interested in that letter, so maybe, maybe Joel will get some traction out of it. Uh, we discussed a very successful nursing program at South Dakota VOTEC and, and how they're working one-on-one with Monument Health, just making it easier to become a registered nurse. And the group shared concerns over the lack of Rapid City's workforce and what other employers are doing, implementing and attracting and retaining employees, because it's not just Pennington County. It's, it's Monument Health, it's about every segment in, uh, in Rapid City, so we all feel the pain.
I went to Safeway this morning and the shelves were kind of empty, you guys. And I said, what's the issue, guys? Cause I thought people were just buying. They're like, we don't have anybody here to work.
Yeah.
It's crazy.
Building Committee, the Building Committee discussed new agenda format, which addressed the methodology that will be employed in the project determination process. The sheriff agreed to start the process by filling out the new capital improvement request form using the Public Safety Building Remodel Lobby Remodel Project as a subject. I talked to the sheriff today and he said it actually went quite well. It, uh, there's a few things that wouldn't be applicable, but overall, he thought it worked pretty good. That'll certainly help us making decisions going forward in the Building Committee. Cindy informed the group that there should be roughly two million in accumulated building funds by the end of two thousand twenty-one. And that is a group, we need to identify what amount needs to be added each year. The group did agree that amounts need to be in excess of five hundred thousand annually for this to work. Group agreed to request three hundred thousand one-time money for the Crisis Care Center, which we did the day. We also agreed to downscale the lamplighter demo project. Uh, just basically focused on getting the building down and keeping as much of the asphalt parking lot as possible. Uh, by doing this, we're gonna, uh, there's gonna be large cost savings. We just didn't think that we needed to spend all that money at, at one time. We just wanted, so we kind of scaled that project back a little bit.
So Ron, just a question on that. Did, uh, you say you save as much of that parking lot as possible? Does that mean you're gonna use recycled asphalt like in the bare spots where the building isn't?
Uh, we haven't got that far. I think Mike was gonna put out a bid and then that bid would probably be, be more detailed on what he expects, but that's, that would be my guess.
Sometimes it might be better to mill it all off, make it all recycled instead of keeping sex.
Definitely don't want to see a big hole where the swimming pool was and so. And I'll probably find out more at the next Building Committee. September the thirteenth, I did my, uh, did the planning commission, and we talked about the American, medical marijuana ordinance. And I think we got some work to do on that. We did agree. One of the things that that ordinance, the way it was written, is that the setback from a dispensary in a residential neighborhood was one hundred feet, and I just didn't think that was enough. And, uh, I see Rapid City's asking five hundred feet, and that was one of the things that I had, just that I didn't think a hundred feet was a big enough buffer. That meeting lasted until about one thirty, so we're, we're gonna be pretty close. September the fourteenth, attended South Dakota Association of County Officials, as did we all, accepted the gold safety award from Mike Cool. Pennington County Housing Redevelopment, that was September the fifteenth, me and Deb attended that together. We reviewed the fiscal year and March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one audit report prepared by Casey Peterson, and as Deb said, we are really setting good. Uh, we can, financially, I mean, we're very, very strong. The group set dollar amounts for voucher payments for Pennington County, Fall River, and Bennett Counties. The voucher payment standard is the maximum amount that a Section Eight participant may spend on rent and utilities. HUD estimates fair market rents annually. PHAs are allowed to establish payment standards within a range of ninety to hundred per, hundred and ten percent of these fair market rents. So for Pennington County, we went the full hundred and ten percent. For the other two counties, we didn't get any information. So we just left them where they were the year before. We selected Upper Deck Architects to provide a schematic design services for the new sixty-five unit apartment complex to be located on Champion Drive in Rapid City. This proposal is based on an eight twenty-five two-one meeting. The site analysis was completed by Upper Deck Architects in July of two thousand and one. The preliminary budget has been identified at approximately one hundred and fifty thousand a unit, or nine million seven hundred and fifty dollars. The scope of the project is the complete delivery of site plans, floor plans, exterior elevations, and opinion of probable costs. We agreed to the fee of thirty-eight thousand eight seventy-five, so that project is in motion. And that will be, uh, on a seven acre lot by Vicki Powers. Greater Northwest Railroad Coalition, Dusty Johnson's representative was available on Zoom, uh, in Washington. Uh, the meeting notes presentation outreach and engagement over state lines by members of the informal coalition. South Dakota has been left off the national map due to what can be called legacy leg forces, actions that can be predated the, the concept of Amtrak. Our team has found passenger rail service unifier, a nonpartisan idea in a time of great divisions. Concerns that urban members of the US House would not support a twenty-five percent allocation for rural routes, services, even if the NEC has had a longstanding forty percent carbon for decades. Opportunity to utilize environmental aspects of the rail to engage and garner support from our urban counterparts. So in short, if you look at the map, um, there's a website. There's just a huge void, and we're in that void. And so I think what they wanted, now that we, we, we know that we got a real authority, they just want to start the dialogue and, and they want kind of like what Hill City was asking today. They just want the county to participate in this, uh, whatever we can, letters of support and whatnot, so. It was, uh, when me and Deb, uh, volunteered to do that, I didn't think that we'd ever have a meeting, but I think there'll be, uh, some work coming down the pipeline.
A couple of things I'll touch on relative to the County Commissioners Convention. Uh, the State Association has obtained the services of Ida Bailey, to assist in answering questions on the ARP funds. Uh, and this will be in assisted, with assistance from the planning, various planning districts or our Black Hills Council, local governments. If we, if we seek it, I mean, there will be a charge to the counties that utilize that. I don't see us probably in much, as much of a position as a lot of the smaller counties may be in, in looking for that advice. Uh, there were some numerous sessions with great presentations. Helene Duhamel did a tremendous job on the, on her media presentation. Uh, heard lots of comments about that of, boy, that sure opened my eyes as to things we can be doing instead of what we are doing to making the public aware. So Helene did a great job with that. We also had a meeting with the South Dakota Court Administrator Greg Sadazan, uh, in regard to their desire for more security in the court system. And, uh, even though they talk about that they've got some grants for that, uh, the amount of their grants, uh, probably wouldn't cover two of the larger counties in doing the upgrades, so. Uh, the grant dollars that are available for what they're looking to have done, uh, in the court systems is, is, I mean, almost non-relevant, so. The county's really pushed back hard on him, uh, basically saying, you know, uh, you're sticking all this cost back on county government, and that really isn't where it belongs. So I think there'll probably be more conversations in the future on that. Uh, but he walked away from there full well, knowing that the counties did not appreciate the idea of just passing all those costs down and demanding a lot of additional things for the, for the court services. Lloyd?
I think, I think Ron would work great in equalization.
What?
With, I think you work great in equalization with your reports. Just giving you a hard time.
Is that a compliment?
I had to do it. I just had to. He, he made me. No. First of all, my list, the MacArthur, I missed that, our last meeting that we had here. We went long, and so I ended up missing the meeting, so it was a pretty short one, from my understanding. Their Quality Board, we, I tried to do that while at the convention. It was a noon one on my phone, the Zoom meeting. I, I was really, yeah. It was a struggle. I think they, you know, they had some high wind warnings and a lot of the smog, uh, that was coming into our area that they had those reports. That's about all I can report on that. Um, Healthcare Trust Board got moved to this week. I showed up by accident this week or last week. But, uh, the other thing I want to do is I want to congratulate, uh, Mr. Drew. Mr. Drew won the election for, uh, second vice for the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners. So congratulations, Gary.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to touch on a few of the other stuff. And WIR, uh, Randy Diebert, Diebert? I keep pronouncing that wrong, like they pronounce mine. He won over for the WIR, so he'll be representing us there. Um, couple of things. Helene was great. That was a great deal. Also, the marijuana discussion was great. Um, one of the other things was, is we, we talked about the equalization. I kept, um, Holly, me, I think me and you were in that that meeting on equalization, or somebody was. About the ordinance is like, just like what we are going through today with, when we're going through these equalization stuff. And Board of Adjustments, you know, are we granting adjustment?
Could get an equalization in planning completely flip-flopped today.
I am, anyway. I can't determine one from the other.
Yeah. Planning.
Planning. Well, they were talking about adjustments and variances. You know, i- if, if we keep granting stuff, it, it's like a law. If we're breaking it, we should be, we could put exceptions in there that, that those guys can oh, this is an exception. Let's, we got it in there. We could put those in there. I don't know where we're at with a lot of that stuff, but that discussion was, uh, a pretty good meeting and, and that I think that's what kind of got me, my fire going again with how we're going, but I mean, yeah. Sometimes it's just a pilot, but. I walked into that one, didn't I? But that was a good meeting. I mean, uh, I think it was an overall pretty good, uh, convention, and I, I really enjoyed it. I mean, one of the things I, I stressed while I was there is if you noticed, if you were there early in the morning at seven, and you seen some of those workers a- at Ram Coda, they were there in the morning. Then when you, if you were there at second o'clock at night for another meeting, they were there. And then you came back the next morning, they were there, same ones. So, you know, I kind of mentioned that there are a few of them that thank you for being here. I mean, you're, you're keeping our convention going and you know they're doing the long hours. So, I mean, and that's something I was paying attention to and, and even Ron showing his appreciation at, uh, uh, Lincoln Day Dinner to some of the servers down at the Civic Center, you know, he, he expressed his appreciation to the work that they were doing. And, you know, these, these guys are showing up every day and and that means something to them when you, when you can recognize them and give them that appreciation.
So before I go to, to Commissioner Lassiter, I just want to say, you know, Lloyd has expressed a real interest in the things that go on with WIR. And I really encourage you to be involved with that and to go to their meetings. Uh, that is critically important, uh, to us in Pennington County and all the Black Hills Counties, uh, with the Pilt Funds and the, and the school funds that they deal with, with all the forests that, that we do have. So I think it's well worth the effort and the expense that we may have to make sure that, uh, we're well represented there. So I would encourage you to continue to participate in that, Lloyd. Ditto. Commissioner Lassiter?
I'm gonna make mine quick. I had the Rapid City Public Library on Central States Fair. So Rapid City Public Library, we went to Zoom only, uh, because of COVID numbers. Um, a couple of takeaways from that is the Sunday closure due to staffing. So they started shutting down on Sundays due to staffing. And then the other thing is, is they started their debt forgiveness. So those who have a lot of, um, you know, debt from their, uh, late fees and stuff of that nature, if you brought in a donation of some food and whatnot, you can go to the website and see what they take, and then they'll reduce your, your fees on that. So that was a, a, a good thing that they put out there. In fact, I saw it on the digital billboards along O- O- Omaha, if I remember correctly, to see that they were advertising that. Central States Fair, uh, you know, they, they wanted me to pass on their thanks for the support from the county commission and that the fair was a, um, a, a very good success. Um, and then they're, they're gonna start talking about their upcoming staff retreat in the near future. So I'll just make it quick. Uh, I had notes, but, um, we changed cars a lot this last week, because we had a fundraiser for my nonprofit, and I think they're in my son's car. So I don't have all my deep notes. So this is what I could remember.
Very good.
We raised about forty-one percent of our goal for the dinner. So it's pretty good, actually. It's the first big dinner we've actually had in five years. So, and the turnout was great for the, for the number of people that showed up. So it was actually really a success in my eyes, because we hadn't had something like that in the last five years. So being able to get one off the ground, having, um, a lot of people stand in line, trying to get in, uh, having a lot of last minutes, uh, we already realized that we need to go from a three hundred person venue to at least a five hundred person venue already for next year.
Very good.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, Commissioner Ross Connect.
Would you want to expand on some of the resolutions that, uh, were discussed at the convention?
Well, the, the resolution, there wasn't anything different than what we've discussed before. Uh, so if there's any questions on them, uh, but otherwise, uh, all the resolutions were adopted. Uh, only, only.
So the half, half cent, was that adopted?
Yeah, it was adopted. Yep. Everything was adopted with the exception of one, because it was, uh, it's also in the, uh, um.
That was a limit on, uh, taxation?
Due now.
Assess value?
Yeah, because, because that's, that's also, we didn't need, we didn't really need the resolution, because it's already in the, the staff, uh, uh, index of, of things to be pushing for and keep on top.
So my question is now, once these resolutions were passed on our level, where do they go? I mean.
Okay, so the State Board will have their meeting in December, uh, go over those. Uh, we will assign people to, uh, uh, work with our lobbyists, to assign people, to find sponsors, uh, for those resolutions. And, uh, and get them introduced in the legislature.
I'd like to work on that.
There, there's a number of other things that need to take place on some of them, because you need the cooperation of some other associations. Sales tax, I mean, we're gonna have to work at the South Dakota Municipal, try to figure out how to maneuver that.
I was just.
Garner support, so.
Mr. Chair?
So, yes.
We would be remiss if we didn't take a moment and thank Joan and Bobby for all their hard work in hosting these spouses during the convention last week. Um, a big thank you to both of them. I have heard nothing but positive, uh, happy, they had the time of their lives, so.
That's true, because I talked to Ron Ross Connect's wife, and he pretty much, or she pretty much said that was amazing, so thank you to those.
Yeah.
Yeah, we heard, we heard a lot of positive things on it. So Joan and, and I know Brooks had. Played a part in helping organize some of that.
And two happy women. There you go. Very, um, I should say servant type ladies, so that's even better, because they're happy and they're very happy to serve, what I'm seeing, both of them in their positions and they're serving people. That's pretty cool.
Well, Larry Johnson, our, our National President, said that his wife probably enjoyed this more than anything else she's ever done, so.
Yeah.
Wow, good job, guys.
You know, just to make that comment, you know, NACO, for him to come and he sat through the meetings just like everybody else. He sat through the, the, uh, one heart presentation and.
He did. He took my seat, me and Holly's seat, at the National Convention a couple of years ago.
He told me about that.
He, we had our, we had our packets right there and everything and all set up. He just moved our stuff and took us by, so Holly reminded me of that. I was like, that was him? But he was very, he's very nice. But I was laughing. I was like, that was the guy.
His presentation at, at NACO was, I mean, a little bit, I don't know if you guys were there when he talked about those steps and what those words meant. I mean, he went through it pretty good. It was a good, he's got a good vision and he's moving that way, so.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the vouchers, the amount of four million seventy-five thousand, seven hundred eighty-six dollars and thirty-two cents.
So move.
Second.
I've got a motion in a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Need a motion for executive session.
The moved.
Okay.
I've got a motion in a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm favored. Thank you, y'all. Nothing at all. We have to come out of executive session.
Yep, take a motion. Got a motion. Do I have a second?
I seconded it.
Okay, so the motion was made by Haddock.
Yes.
Seconded by Lassiter.
Yes, sir.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. John?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, John Morrow, Pennington County Human Resources. So I have one, um, motion I'd like to suggest. Um, and this is what it reads. Uh, we request to authorize the Highway Department to hire Ian Garduna at grade C forty-three, step seven, for a pay period sum of two thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars and forty cents per pay period as a full-time benefited exempt status employee effective October fourth, two thousand twenty-one.
Seconded. Got a motion in a second for the discussion. And Mr. Holly, yeah, it's on the bottom of that. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Move to adjourn.
Second. Got a motion in a second to adjourn. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We're adjourned. Thank you.